Hi, I'm Jeremy Crosby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're your hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every weekday, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can find all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues affecting you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the City of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
Good evening, everyone, to the November 11, 2025 Common Council meeting. The first thing is to call to the order to the meeting, and please stand up for the place of allegiance. Thank you. Next is roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Radifrada.
Here.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Here.
Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Herps.
Here.
Alder Jutser.
Here.
Alder Lotte Say.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Reigstad.
Here.
You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. So next, we move to item four. It's public appearances for non-agenda items. So the first thing is I will open the Public Hearing on Resolution R-177-25. It's council proposed amendment to the 2026 operating budget. Do we have any one on the audience? Dave, do you want to talk in this topic, or is it different? Okay, so this is not about four. Okay. Okay. Seeing none, I am closing the public hearing. So next, we move to the consent agenda. Oh, then I am calling David Haid for a non-agenda item.
Good evening. David Haid, 5855 Woodshed Road. So this is a topic that I've talked about in the past. So the Clean Water Act was passed in '72, and it said that no pollutant may be discharged into the waters of the U.S. without a permit. And since stormwater picks up pollutants, you have to have a permit to discharge stormwater that's collected into the waters of the state. Now, the waters of the state and the state of Wisconsin are defined far more rigorously than the waters of the U.S. in particular wetlands. But nonetheless, every discharge of stormwater that enters a city facility, and a city facility includes a gutter. As soon as the water hits the gutter, if that gutter is owned by the city, that stormwater, from there on out, is the responsibility of the city. Whether it goes into a private facility and then comes out, it's been in a public facility, which is the gutter, and it's the responsibility of the city. So I've talked about this before, and the question is, what's the signatory requirement for these permits? Well, so this is the, along with Clean Air Act, which really doesn't affect the city. So this is by far the most significant regulatory regime that the city has to adhere to. And so it being a very important law, the Congress wanted to make sure that the highest level of incorporation was accountable for adhering to this law. And so what's the signatory authority that's required for an application for a permit? So all permit applications, report, and other information requested by you and I shall be signed by a responsible executive or municipal officer, manager, partner, or proprietor. All applications and reports submitted to the department shall include that certification, which says that there's penalty of law, et cetera, et cetera. An officer, manager, partner, or proprietor. So in this case, the highest elected officer is the mayor. The council as a body could also issue vote to sign the permit. But the mayor may only delegate signature authority to a duly authorized representative if that person is responsible for the overall operation of facility activity regulated by the permit. In this case, it's overall responsibility for the operation of the city's stormwater system. Arguably, that's you, the mayor, the Board of Public Works, because it is the stormwater utility, and it does own and operate the stormwater facility. Now, who's been signing these permits? Who signed all these permits for Cyan Road? Not the mayor. Transportation engineer, other engineers. These permits are fraudulent.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next, we move to item five, Consent Agenda.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay. Any question, comments about this? Okay, so all of them favor the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
Mayor, I have a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to move Public Safety and Human Services, the one resolution, and then also all of the resolutions under New Business to now on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, so we are moving 9C, 1, A123.
Yes.
That's correct? Okay, so we are moving all of those up. All those in favor of moving up all of these resolutions up, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So, okay, so next one is Public Safety. Okay.
R-20225, Amending the 2025 General Fund Budget, Fire Vehicle Maintenance.
Second.
Public Safety approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
Do you want to come and speak to it? It's repairs on three different fire trucks.
Yes, this is moving money around to cover some overages we had in our vehicle expenses, repairing fire trucks, which unfortunately, we've had another bad year with that. So we gathered money from five different accounts for a total of $18,600 to hopefully cover us all the way to the end of the year. So luckily, we were able to do that, and I don't want to jinx myself by saying we think we'll be successful, but hopefully, we will.
So this one is to cover all this repair up to December, or they are past expenses?
A little bit of past and future.
Future, okay.
Getting us to the end of the year, yes.
Any question, comment?
We're crossing our fingers the trucks don't have to leave the station for the next month.
Yeah. Me too.
Any question, comment? Here, none. All those in favor of Resolution R-202-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, chief. So next one is a new business. It's a direct referral from finance.
I will move approval of Resolution R-20925, Approval of an Agreement for Payment Between the City of Pittsburgh and Sustained Dane for Implementation of Phase Two Project Four, Funding Source Change of the Efficiency Navigator Program.
Second, that motion.
Finance approved.
Board of Public Works approved.
Thank you.
Joyce is online to talk to this.
Okay, Joyce. Hi. Hello.
Otherwise, I can speak to her.
You can start, and then she can show.
Yeah, so this is... Oh, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. This is actually a request to not get additional dollars, but to use the contingency fund and then also the dollars that we were going to use for some window projects to cover the expenses that we had initially planned to use, a Community Change Fund, that we worked with City of Madison to secure $20 million to do energy efficient updates to our low-to-moderate-income properties. And Southdale actually happened to qualify. It was in a qualified census tract that covered Madison, so we were able to partner together. So Sustained Dane went ahead, did the phase one, identified the projects, and then the administration changed, and the funding was clawed back. So what we were hoping to do is make Sustained Dane whole for the funding that they had anticipated to get through the Community Change Dollars for our joint application. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Yes, we're fine. Okay, any question, comment?
Great.
Dave?
You know, the work was done. You know, we have to reimburse Sustained Dane for the work that was done. They didn't get the grant. The Board of Public Works, you know, when we've talked to Joyce, you know, we've had lots of questions on these. And moves forward, I think it would make sense to flowchart the process. There was some kind of some confusion, how it works, and, you know, next time we have a project...
Can you give us an example? No?
There were change orders, and, you know, was it an estimate? You know, it went back and forth. We had quite a discussion. I think having a flowchart of the process we're going to follow might help the city and make it easier for Joyce to navigate everything. But that's all.
Can I just make one quick comment on that? I think the issue is possibly that Board of Public Works was really not aware of what the project, what the actual Efficiency Navigator Program was all about. So I think it's more of an educational issue than it was, because there was only one small change order, and that was for insulation. When Sustained Dane went in, they found out that a roof had been leaking, and they planned to just add insulation, but they found out that the roof was in terrible condition, and all the insulation was moldy. And so instead of adding insulation, they had to go and remove all the insulation and add new. So I think that was the confusion on... That was one of the major questions from the Board of Public Works, is really trying to understand what the program was and how it worked. So I think as we move forward, maybe we could have Sustained Dane come in, give a presentation maybe at the Board of Public Works, so they realize what the program is about and how it works.
Okay, thank you. So far, Joyce, maybe you can clarify that, but we have helped 68 families and 70 units, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's eight different owners, seven units. I believe like 18 of them are senior citizens.
Okay.
I don't recall the actual number of families, but it's insignificant. I think Claire has been working on some data, but I know she made mention to me when we were talking, and don't quote me, because I may not be saying this right, but she said some of the carbon emissions that have been saved is like a vehicle driving around the world. So I mean, we're doing some really, really good things with the investments that we've made, not only for our lower income residents, but also towards our sustainability goals.
Okay, thank you. Any question, comments? Okay, Logan.
Two quick questions. First of all, just want to ask Joyce just one more time. So this was money that was awarded from the federal government, and then the change in presidential administration resulted in the money getting clawed back?
Absolutely, yeah. We were, between the City of Madison and Pittsburgh, there was an award of $20 million through the Community Change Grant through the EPA. And then those dollars were clawed back. However, Sustained Dane had already started. They did the weatherization assessment, and we're ready to move on with the next phase. So we do want to continue with that next phase and continue to work with Sustained Dane. So we're just moving the contingency and the window dollars around. We're not asking for any additional dollars. We're just putting it towards finishing the Deer Valley projects.
All right. And then my quick follow-up to that, and I'll keep my personal thoughts on that to myself. Do we expect, or is there a chance that this could happen again with this program, with future phases?
I think we'll be, well, I guess I'm going to take a step back, and if for some reason the funding would come back, then we would be made whole. We would get the dollars back that we're going to move around, that were supposed to come from Community Change. You know, I can't say that we would count on it if we, I mean, based on the experience that we've had with this grant award. I mean, I know Claire's had some sleepless nights being very concerned about this funding and how, you know, they were going to be made whole as a nonprofit.
I think we're moving in the right direction, making them whole. I just was, Mike, I was trying to get a little bit more at, would this possibly, could we be back here six months, a year from now, having the same conversation for another phase of the project? I.e., is there more money that we have gotten that could still be clawed back, or have they taken everything that they can take?
No, because when we did the project, if you recall, this was supposed to be like one... It's really a two-phase program. The first phase is doing the assessments, and then the second phase is the actual implementation of the weatherization recommendations. But because we had applied jointly with the City of Madison for these dollars, we actually put the Qualified Census Tract, which is Southdale, we actually pulled those projects out and put them in a separate project. So we're addressing the dollars that were allocated for Southdale right now. So I, no, I don't believe we'll be coming back with anything else. But Claire, I think she's on the line, and if I'm incorrect on that, would you please comment and set the record straight?
You are correct. There is no other projects that we would be coming back for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other question, comments? Here, none. All those in favor of Resolution R-209-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion passes. Okay.
I'll move approval of Resolution R-21125, Approving the Copier Lease for City Hall Third Floor Workroom.
Second.
This is a direct referral, and Finance Committee approved.
Okay, what is this?
Basically, we're adding the copier on the third floor workroom to the current copier lease that we have. It'll save costs and just something that needs to happen.
Okay. Any question, comments? All those in favor of Resolution R-211-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the resolution passes. Next one.
I'll move approval of Resolution R-21225, Wisconsin Independent Networks Win Contract Renewals.
Second.
Finance Committee approved, and this is just a longer term for a contract we currently have. And I can tell you nothing else, unless Nick was in.
Sure.
So we have Nick, our IT Director here, so go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is with Win Independent Networks. These are existing services that we own and pay for on a month-to-month basis presently. And we are able to leverage some cost savings by signing a 36-month lease, which we felt adequate. We could have gone, obviously, up to five years, but we felt this was a safe middle ground, giving us an opportunity to save costs and an opportunity to switch gears at a later date if we choose to. And so primarily, we're looking to save those costs by signing a 36-month lease with Win Independent Networks or Wisconsin Independent Networks, and that's what the ask is for.
Okay. Any question, comments? No? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution R-1225, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion passes. Okay, thank you, Nick. Okay, where we are now?
Administration.
Oh, Administration, okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'll start with a number of events to get on your calendars. First one is the Better Together Chamber event with the Pittsburgh Chamber of Commerce and several other area chambers of commerce. That'll be happening tomorrow, November 12, from 4:30 to 7:30 at the Barnwood Events Center, just outside the City of Pittsburgh, near Larson and East Clayton Road. The Funders Forum, being put on by our Economic Development Team, is Thursday, November 13, from 1:30 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. in the second floor of the library. Also on Thursday, November 13, at 4:00 p.m. is a ribbon cutting for the Cyan Road project, and that'll be held in the parking lot of Fire Station Number Three. That project has largely concluded, and the road was open to traffic last Friday. The City in Motion Economic Development Plan update is kicking off next Thursday, November 20, at 4:00 p.m., and that will also be held in the library. The Open House and Ribbon Cutting for the Hub project on Traceway Drive will be November 24. The Open House runs from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., and the ribbon cutting will take place at 5:15 p.m. Couple of holiday-related events. The annual Get Festive with Agora event, just down the hill from City Hall here at the Agora Pavilion, will be held Friday, December 12, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And the Annual Holiday Lights Tour will also be held with the event at Fire Station Number One on Lacy Road on Saturday, December 13, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Moving on to other updates. You may have noticed in the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission Agenda an item regarding potential contractual assistance from CARPSY related to the shared development possibilities between the Village of Oregon and the City of Pittsburgh. There have been some ongoing conversations between the two communities, and at this point in time, we feel it would be appropriate to seek some assistance from CARPSY to have some small meetings to determine what might be possible and feasible in that particular area and assist with urban service area amendments related to known projects in the potential pipeline, specifically the Department of Corrections facility, as well as a potential future school or schools from the Oregon School District in that area. So you will see ultimately, in the near term here, a contract coming forward to Common Council, likely prior to the end of the year, that would allow staff or direct staff to continue working on this project and involve CARPSY moving forward. And if approved, you would receive a presentation from CARPSY on their findings and initial information. We're looking at the end of February for that update. The next item, we, when I say "we," Mayor Radifrada and I met with our colleagues from the Village of Oregon and the City of Verona, as well as our Fire and EMS chiefs this morning to continue preliminary discussions on potential to collaborate on a joint Fire and EMS district. There will also be a resolution to Common Council forthcoming in the next few weeks, seeking a direction on how the council would like to proceed with that particular project.
Can you mention that we are doing with it? The three municipalities we are doing with?
Yeah. Yeah, so we would be proceeding with the three municipalities, Village of Oregon, City of Pittsburgh, and City of Verona. And the resolution will outline the next steps that staff are proposing to take, and then again, seek direction from the Common Council on whether you'd like us to proceed with those steps. I will remind staff, I'm sorry, remind Alders of the Committee of the Whole meeting next Monday, November 17, at 6:30 p.m. That meeting will be to interview the two candidates for the District Four vacant seat. And then Common Council will be voting on that vacancy at your meeting scheduled for November 25. And it is important that all members of Common Council are in person for that meeting in order to vote.
Can you mention that? The direction I'm coming?
Yeah, I can also mention that we'll have some forthcoming information related to the process and how it will work, both for the Committee of the Whole and the evening of November 25. Next item is Tracy has informed me that the spring election candidate papers or packets will be available on the city's website tomorrow and also can be picked up in person at the clerk's office. Those papers cannot be circulated until December 1, and then all forms are due to the clerk's office no later than 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January 6, 2026. Next, I'd like to thank Mike Zimmerman and the Economic Development Team and all of the other city staff members, Mayor Aradifrada, and those elected officials who were able to attend the Pittsburgh Business Luncheon last week. I think it was a great event, and everybody involved has received some really positive feedback. So thank you to everyone who participated, in whatever way you participated with that event. The list would be quite long for me to list off all of the folks specifically, so I tried to keep it at a high level there. I would also like to acknowledge your city clerk, Tracy Oldenburg, for earning her Wisconsin Certified Professional Clerk certification. So congratulations to you. And then finally, with this being Veterans Day, I just want to acknowledge any veterans that we may have here in the room and also any city staff and/or community members as a whole who are veterans, and of course, any veterans who have paid the ultimate sacrifice for the country. Thank you. Any questions for me?
No?
No, all right.
Okay. So next, we move to my report. So I am not going to repeat all the events that Chad just mentioned. So today, I had the opportunity to participate in the Veteran Day Celebration that the Senior Center organized. We have more than 100 people and more than 36 veterans, you know. So I want to say thank you to the Eagle School for the kids came to sing, and also the Singers is a group here in Pittsburgh, seniors that, you know, that they perform every year. It was a great event. So last Friday, we also had a meeting with the Madison Metropolitan School District here. We was Chad, Mike, Deanna. We discussed, the meeting was about Pittsburgh developments, because they want to know how we are growing, because it's going to affect, you know, the school attendance. So it was a great meeting, and we are planning to do a tour. I don't know when, but, you know, they're coming. We are going to, in February, yeah. So they want to come and do a tour with us, and we are going to show in all the areas here in Pittsburgh. So it was a great meeting. The superintendent of the Madison School District was also present. I also attended the meeting for the Joint Review Board. It was a great meeting, and good to know. and good to know that all our tax incremental district are performing and making money. What else? We had another meeting with Chad like two Friday ago with Plisco. They're planning to bring another, it's in District Two, it's beside the Hub, another, what is it like?
270 unit.
270?
Wolf's housing.
Wolf's housing unit. So that one could be moving maybe the first quarter of next year. We also, I also attended the business, Pittsburgh Business Luncheon, and I want to say congratulate everyone. I received a lot of emails and texts. People were very impressed, and we're happy with the direction that the city is taking. So I want to say thank you, all the staff, because I seen a lot of staff was working behind the scene, and especially to the Economic Development Team and the Pittsburgh Chamber and Pro-Mega for our partnership with them. That morning, I had also the opportunity to do the ribbon cutting for the UW Rehab Hospital, and it was a great ribbon cutting. A lot of people came. Thank you for the elder that they came to that event. We just, today, we did a tour with Chad, and it was, the development is coming along. So it was great to see that. What else? You mentioned, and the other thing that I want to congratulate, the superintendent of the Verona School District, Dr. Tremaine Clary, for being recognized as the 2026 Wisconsin Superintendent of the Year by the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators. So he's also a Pittsburgh resident, and we are very proud of his leadership and the advancing education in the Verona School District. So we should be, this is would be, if you have the opportunity, please send him an email. Congratulate him. I know, I imagined, yeah, I saw it. Then I want to invite you to another ribbon cutting. This is going to happen in District Three. In the Ochala Drive, in the Ochala, in Bella? What is the name of that?
Bella Spring.
Bella Spring? In the commercial section, you know that it has been empty for many, many years.
That's Ochala Spring.
Ochala Spring? What you told me?
I said Bella. That's another building.
Oh, okay, okay. So it's another, because that commercial space was empty since they, you know, since opening that building. So it's a grooming, a pet grooming service called Art Up. Art Up. It's going to be 11:22, from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. So everyone is invited, especially the elders from the district. The November 22nd, it's a Saturday, okay? What else? And also, I had the opportunity with Alder Herrhart to participate in the, to attend the Madison Area Builder Association event. So it's another opportunity to interact with other mayors, developers, you know, and also we have the opportunity to present what are the housing development projects coming in Pittsburgh. So that's it. Any question, comment? Okay, so next, we move on to what's? Commission and committee report, and we will start with Plan Commission.
Plan Commission meets next week. I move to postpone Preliminary Plat PP 261825 to the November 25th council meeting.
Second.
This is just because Plan Commission has not seen it yet. There was a delay.
Okay, all those in favor of postponing the preliminary Plat PPP-2618-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
And we meet next week, that's all.
Thank you. So next, we move to the Board of Public Works.
All right, I'll move approval of resolution R-19525, approving the purchase of 2025 Mobank BVR 16 brush chipper.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
We have a 2013 chipper that is kind of reaching, reaching the end of its life. If you look at these, these will chip up to a 10-inch log, so you can imagine it gets banged around pretty good. And we will be putting the 2013 up for sale, and hopefully, we get, hopefully, we get what we're asking for it. If not, then we'll trade it in with the dealer. But this is a kind of our scheduled repair maintenance. This unit has about 900 hours on it, so it's used about 80 hours, 80 hours a year.
So how often do we replace this, the brush chipper?
I would guess 12 years.
12 years?
Yeah, you know, it was, it's a 2013, Mayor. I'm not, I don't know if it's 12 or whatever, but I suspect that's what.
So we are selling?
We're getting 20, we're hoping to get about 20,000 for it. Does that sound right?
So it'll go to auction with a reserve price of 22,000. And if we don't get that, the dealer that we're buying the new one from has agreed to take the old one for 22,000 in trade-in value.
And how much the new one cost for the people?
73K.
Oh, good. What is the one that, oh?
It drives the.
Oh, yeah, I am confused with the other one that go through it.
Yeah, if you've ever been around, you know, tree clearing and things like that, it's, it's a, it's a little bit, it's a little bit of a scary machine. I guess I'll just put it that way.
So who, who are the people like who use it here, who know how to use it?
Parks and streets.
Parks and streets, I know how to, okay, good.
Yeah.
So I'm going to put another hat, and I'm going to ask another question about, if we are using this vehicle 80 hours per year, okay? Why we don't lease? I don't know, I want to know the math there, you know what I mean, like?
I don't know about, I don't have an answer for you, Mayor, on the lease, but.
We typically do not lease equipment or vehicles, largely because of some of the accounting issues associated with that. And I know from my experience in the police department, when we were previously leasing vehicles, we actually were not saving any money by doing so. It was actually costing us the same as it would cost us to actually purchase, so.
Okay, okay. No, because that one is a fair question people can ask, because maybe they don't understand, they say 80 hours and say 80 hours a year, you know what I mean?
So to put that in comparison, Madam Mayor, the, when we contract to have the brush, you know, it's about $400 an hour, someone else.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so if you looked at our 80, it's not exact match, but you know, the, if you looked at our 80 hours at 400, it's 32,000.
No, it makes sense. In the long term, the numbers make sense. Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you. Any other question, comments? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-19525, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
Next, we have resolution R-20125, authorizing acceptance of 2025 stormwater utility facility maintenance bid.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
RCC approved.
Okay.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
Basically, this is two parts. Corey Ridge, where one of our ponds, we're going to add additional clay liner on it so that it holds larger depth of water, so that if you have more water in there when the effluent comes in, or you know, it settles out, it catches it a little better. And then the other one is we have to improve, fix the infiltration on another pond. Ben, I'll let you jump in here. I see you're up there.
Yeah, I think that's a pretty good, pretty good explanation. But yeah, so with the Corey Hill Pond, it's just due for kind of your periodic dredging. There's quite a bit of sediment built up, and as was mentioned, it doesn't hold the proper depth of water, so it'll be not only excavating out the accumulated sediment, but there'll be some additional excavation to make room for a clay liner to allow it to hold a proper water level. And then just to the south of the Corey Hill Wet Pond, there is the Teklin's Infiltration Basin. Again, this is really just kind of a maintenance project on it, or maybe a little bit more than maintenance. It is kind of essentially getting reconstructed. It's just a failed infiltration basin. It's not infiltrating water as it was intended. So we'll be removing some of the soils. We'll be installing a granular gravel storage layer to allow the water a greater depth to pond. We'll be installing some undergrains as well to just kind of promote the drainage while vegetation is establishing. And that's, that's kind of the main scope of work for the infiltration basin. I haven't answered any other questions that make them up.
Yeah, Dave?
Ben, is it fair to say, you know, this is an established development that we expect the pond to take longer to get to the point where it has to be dredged in the future? Or am I, am I wrong? You know, if there's trees around there that?
I think that's probably fair to say. This pond in particular doesn't have a huge drainage area to it. Again, there is no construction that will be, or no large-scale construction, at least, that's going to be occurring in these areas. So sediment load is, should be, you know, pretty stable. It's been, let's see, I think this one was originally installed in 2002 or '03, so, you know, 22 or so years. That's, you know, if you're, that's within the ballpark of when you'd kind of expect to be dredging ponds, you know, 20, 30 years. But yeah, I think after this, this work is done, it should, it should be good for, you know, another 30 years.
30, whoa. Okay.
This, this is a big project, you know, it's, is it 380 or 280,000, Bill? 300, 380, Chad?
800,000.
Between the two, it's close to 800,000.
This is a big, this is a major, major undertaking.
It's fancy.
And Ben, you clarified at the RCC meeting that out of the Corey Hill Pond, we're going to pull something like 5,200 cubic yards of accumulated sediment, and then another 1,700 beneath that to make room for the clay liner. So I don't know what, what do you use to, for people to gauge what 7,000 cubic yards looks like?
7,000? 700, 700 dump trucks?
How many mulch bag? I can't.
700, 700 10-yard dump trucks.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good pile of, it's a good pile of dirt. Let's see, I don't know if I can find a comparison for that.
Not as big as the Pyramid of Giza, I don't think.
While we're looking for a comparison, Bill also discovered something in the finance report that there was a charge for herpetology, and asking what that is, and it's reptiles and amphibians. I think, not technically, but anyway, the, they're removing the frogs and the turtles because they hibernate over the winter and the dunes over the winter. So we're moving them, putting them into another pond in the Pittsburgh so that they do not get disturbed when this happens over the winter. So it's very nice.
And that costs significantly less than $800,000.
To spend time around their detention basins like I do, there is a huge amount of frogs, reptile. It's crazy how many are around there, because I know my dogs are chasing them like crazy.
Interesting.
Yep, and that work was already performed. I think they pulled out close to 200 frogs and got them moved.
Oh, really?
And some turtles. And yeah, one cubic yard, you could call that like a washing machine. So it's going to be, you know, like 7,000 washing machines. Thank you for contextualizing.
Okay. Any other question, comments? I think we are learning a lot. Yeah, Logan.
Ben, I just wanted to follow up on the life of, of the failed infiltration basin. I'm just looking at Google Earth satellite images, and it looks like there was, when Nobel Drive was put through sometime between 2014 and 2017, it looks like there was another retention pond or something built at that time. And I'm just curious if there was any improvements made to the infiltration basin then? That would then kind of make me wonder a little bit more about the longevity, if it was only eight years before it failed versus, you know, 20, when it was first put in, in like 2002, like you said.
So the Corey Hill Pond was put in around 2002. The Teklin's Infiltration Basin was actually put in in 2013 or 2014. There were some issues, I believe, even during the warranty period. There was some additional work performed by the, the original contractor. And, you know, it looked like maybe it was working for a while, for a couple of years after. It stopped working again. So the city consulted with a geotechnical company to do some test pits, kind of take a look at the existing soils. I think they tried to kind of turn the, turn the dirt over again, which wasn't very successful long-term. So there has been kind of issues long-term with this basin. So what we're proposing here, I would have a much higher level of confidence in this kind of solving the problem permanently than some of the past attempts to fix it. So none of the, none of the previous attempts to fix it really involved digging much further below the native, or I'm sorry, the engineered soil that was brought in. So I have a fairly high level of confidence that part of this issue is due to substandard soils. We had test pit, more test pits done a couple of years ago, and, you know, we ran into clay. So we know there's some soils or lens seams of soils that are out there that we can get ripped up and replaced with gravel. So I, you know, I would really hope, once this project is complete, it's, it doesn't have to be touched for quite some time.
I think that would be a very great end outcome. I assume then this is out of warranty. I'm just kind of asking if, if it hasn't worked as was intended originally, and I don't know if that's exactly the case, you know, if we want to parse words here. But if we've tried all these fixes before and it still hasn't worked, you know, do we, are we able to go back to the original contractor and say, "It's never worked as it was supposed to"? And just like we kind of do with sidewalks, if they've, you know, put in a whole block of sidewalks that end up cracked, and we have to go back two years later and fix them?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any recourse with the contractor at this point, you know, 11 years later. They did, I know the city did try working with them during the, during the warranty period, and, and I think they, you know, it did maybe work for a couple of years, and it was believed to, to have worked. But yeah, at this point, there's, there's really nothing we're gonna, I don't see being able to get anything accomplished with the original contractor. And it's, it's an infiltration basin. Having issues like this is not uncommon. It happens actually very frequently. Typically, you can, you know, you catch those right away and you get it fixed. So something like putting a granular storage layer is, is kind of the first, you know, one of the first courses of action you would, you would want to do. But yeah, at this point, I don't see there any, there being any ability to have the original contractor fix this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other question, comments? Here none. All those in favor of resolution R-201-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next one.
Move approval of resolution R-20325, approving budget amendment number one to Sine Road Phase Three.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, before we go to the, to the resolution, we have David Hight, he wishes to speak.
David Hight, 5855 Woods Edge Road. Let me refresh your memory. So this was the boiling sand at Phase Three. sand at Phase Three that we were assured was not a big deal. Well, the next day, I took the observations from the test borings and matched them to glacial groundwater flows and came up with the fact that, guess what? It's Nine Springs Eway. There's a sign there that says Nevens Springs. And it's a highly protected area with groundwater dependent, the most protected calcareous fens in the state identified right next to that site in 1999. As part of the amendment to the Dane County Water Quality Plan, the city signed that they would protect them. When I went out there the next day, everything was gone. Headwater wetlands from Nine Springs Creek, gone. And you know what? Unexpected? No. Uh-uh. You know how many studies were done of that? Detail, detail, detail. So that we would protect Nine Springs Eway? Here's two dissertations. One's right on the inner curve, one's right on the outer curve. You can't see it. But right here. And look at the layers, how it flows. That wasn't unexpected. The city had constructive knowledge because it has all these things in its library. I found them on the website. And it has actual knowledge because Tracy Foss was a member of a 2011 study that mapped the groundwater flow with a diagram right where they were hitting that. Now, the problem here is that KNL was the one who did the design. And KNL has an obligation under the law to use best practices. They can't just ignore things like it's common knowledge that this is a spring area. And so what was the issue? You approved it after Board of Public Works approved it. Well, Ms. Lobdell, who is affiliated with KNL, was the deciding vote on the Board of Public Works vote to approve that. That's not just an ethics problem. That's an ethics violation to vote on something if there was liability to KNL for malfeasance or other issues of the design. So I asked, the city administrator took an hour, I gave him information. I said, you need to look at whether that vote was legal. And if not, if that was a conflict of interest, because if you vote to fill it, finish it, and get rid of it, that's a lot cheaper than having to remediate it. And the answer that came back was, and I sent you the email, no, it's fine. And the problem is, the city attorney was involved. Well, you see, there's a problem with someone who's got a contract with the city, sitting on the Board of Public Works, which is also a stormwater utility, and the sewer and water utility. That's actually independent budgeting authority.
Your time is out.
So this is a huge deal. Do not underestimate my commitment to make sure that this goes to the highest levels it can possibly go.
Your time is out.
To be addressed.
Thank you. Okay, can you explain, Dave, what is, what we are doing here?
We had, we had to pay, when the sand was exposed, you know, when it was compacted with existing road over it, wasn't, wasn't an issue. And then when the weight above it was taken off, then it would not sustain. And so then we had to put in a larger aggregate in there to stabilize the, stabilize the road for the construction. And part of it, this, this change order kind of has two parts, one for the pond and one for the, one for the road. And so larger aggregate was put in there, stabilized the road so that that, we could build over the top of it. Tim, I don't know if Tim wants to add anything.
Yeah, Tim and Ross, if you can add, clarify some of the, you know, some of the comments that were made about, you know, at the end of the day, the, you know, the DOT had to sign all of our approval and permits and someone in their team are reviewing what we are doing. And DNR is already part of this. So can, you know, can you explain why we are doing this and then clarify for the people that are listening that we are following the process and the protocol here? And we are not doing something illegal?
Yeah, I will let Ross kind of go into the detail. But as far as the permitting, during the, this change, the city, Wisconsin Department of Transportation worked with the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources through the cooperative agreement process to ensure that we were in full compliance with any laws, regulations that were required to follow. So it was determined we're in compliance. We have an email from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, Alex Hagan, he's their project development supervisor, confirming all of that. So as far as kind of the details of what we did, Ross, I can, if you wanted to maybe explain that.
Yeah. I guess feel free to, anybody ask any questions as we kind of go over this. But like, the, the technical details of this change order are, we basically added extra select crush material, like Dave Herbst said, like Alder Herbst said. And this is above and beyond what was done in change order one for this project. So this was additional select crushed material that we did not anticipate in that first change order under both the roadway and the stormwater pond that is on the southeast corner of the roadway here.
Dave.
Great. As long, Lobdell is very good about recusing herself. If, you know, there's change orders to, to KNL, or there's something with KNL, she's very good. This, this was not a change order for money, additional money to KNL. This is for additional material on that. So it wasn't a, something that was benefiting her. So I, you know, I didn't ask her to recuse herself on that. There was no money going forward. Mr. Hight makes a good point. Maybe it would have been better for me to ask her. But I, since her firm did not benefit, he can question whether they made a bad decision. But in this case, I didn't, I didn't feel like she needed to recuse herself on the decision. It was, it was five zero on the, on the, on the vote at Public Works also. She, she wasn't the deciding, deciding vote. Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that. And also, because I very concerned of the, some of the accusation that they are being made right now. For the people that are listening to us, I, I, I want you to, can you tell me that what we are doing is following the process here? Because Mr. Hight, Hight is making big accusation that we are destroying the wetline or we are not following some of the, what is the research that was done? 2011?
Yeah. So whenever we do one of these road projects, there's obviously a lot of permitting that goes into the, this process before we get all the way through the design. And then once we have a completed design, we have to apply for permits, several different permits with the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. As Tim mentioned, we have worked with them, you know, before this project started in the design phase. And then as the project went on and as we went through these changes to the design during the construction of the project, the Wisconsin Department of Transportation consulted with the Wisconsin DNR and got approval of these changes. And the Wisconsin DNR is well aware of everything that Mr. Hight has said. Since a lot of his emails have gone right to the DNR and any that he sent to the city or the Wisconsin DOT team on this project were also forwarded to the DNR when we were doing these reviews during the project. So as far as, yeah, permitting, the process during construction, that's all approved by Wisconsin DOT, who holds the contract for this project, and then the Wisconsin DNR, who is responsible for all the natural resources permitting on any project in the state.
Okay, thank you. Any question, comments? No? Okay. All those in favor of resolution R-203-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So thank you, Tim and Ross. Okay, so what is next? Park Commission?
Move approval of resolution R-18525, mending 2025 TID closure fund and cemetery fund budgets, parks and parks projects.
Second.
Parks, Parks approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
Kind of a few components on here. We are, and again, this will require two thirds vote. Look at my notes here. On some improvements, some maintenance, maintenance work at the Jamestown Eagle, Eagle Park Shelter is, is part of it. We would like to, we're working on getting an update to our park signs. We're maybe looking towards moving to a sign that has more symbols versus a lot of wording. And we're also looking at having, having both English and Spanish on these signs. We requested 7,000, that's kind of a pilot on it. And then the last part at our cemetery, we need to replace the sign. And there's money in the cemetery fund from people buying plots, but it wasn't in the 2025 budget. So this, this transfer are the three, are the three components of this, of this TID closure fund request here.
Okay. Any other question? Our parks, interim parks? No, you are no interim anymore. You are retired.
Yeah.
Parks director.
I bet you a watch.
Yes, Logan.
I just have one comment. I think, something I think would be nice to have, if there's room on these signs, it sounds like if we're going to English and Spanish and there's symbols, it's getting pretty cramped. I think it'd be great to have some additional signage that also says, hey, you could rent this space. Let folks know that these, A, not only just to fill our public safety and human services agendas with some more events, but also, you know, help bring some additional revenue into the city and let people know, yes, you can have your graduation party or your birthday party or your family reunion here at the parks. Just kind of make that a little bit more visible. I'd love to see that. I don't know if there's room, but.
Okay. Joe, yes?
Could a fix to that be maybe one of those little plastic holders that holds like signs? That might be.
I think, yeah, because you go to the splash pad in one of the, the columns, they have that. And they are, all the rental information is there. I don't know in all the parks, but I can see it.
Like little baby.
But yeah, so we come, so I don't know, but some of the parks, they have areas where the, the rental information is there. So I don't know. Yeah.
Are we planning on putting like a QR code on there too, so that people can?
That could be a cute, good idea. Yeah.
Link to the website with all the rules and regulations?
Yeah, look, the parks, parks meeting agenda where we'll, we'll be discussing this. There's a lot, there's a lot. It's not going to be, you know, we have 7,000 in there. That's just a, almost a pilot. It's going to cost much more than that, I think, to get all our, 60 some parks, Chad? Does that sound right? Or Adam? 60?
Yeah, I think 60 some parks and about 800 acres of park and conservancy in the city. So there's a number of signs.
Eighty-eight parks.
Eighty-eight?
I don't know.
That's, that could be fair. Yeah, 88?
I think that includes, yeah. I think that includes all the undeveloped areas, like in Uptown, I think there's like eight that are just grass, but technically a park.
Okay.
This, this was about 17K plus the 8K for the cemetery, I think is what.
Okay, so this is two third, we need two thirds of the vote, so I will do roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhert.
Aye.
Alder Herbst.
Aye.
Alder Jutser.
Aye.
Alder Lattesay.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Regstead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. It is 1,800, 815 acres, which includes 40 parks.
No, but that, I, I, I just got the information from Eric and Dakota. So.
Oh, maybe this was the GPGIS map.
Yeah, I know. Is that, yeah.
And I believe Chad mentioned, you know, we have a new Parks Director, Eric Schreiner, has started. So very impressive, very impressive background. We look forward to working with him.
Oh, and it says we have 24 natural areas, six special use areas, and 23 undeveloped park areas. So maybe that's where it's at.
We put all of that.
Three French hens, two turtle doves.
Anything else from parks?
No matter, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we are still accepting names, isn't it, for the naming of the house?
Yes, yeah, we are still.
Until December 22nd.
That is correct.
Okay, so, okay. Okay, then Library Report.
I have no report.
Thank you. Commission on Aging Well?
Yes. The only thing I wanted to report is just shout out to the friends and the working committee for having the luncheon tour last week. It wasn't super widely attended. However, I know a lot of work went into that. So I just wanted to tell those individuals like they did a great job and they keep planning. And there is things that they're working on to continue to increase outreach from the senior center, to also get more individuals in our seniors throughout the city of Fitchburg to come into the senior center.
So what was the event?
It was a, it was a luncheon tour. So they had from the Lymerick and from the other, I forget the name of the other one off the top of my head. But basically, transportation for individuals who had signed up by the specified date that they would bring them to the senior center and back.
Okay, okay, okay.
And then they had lunch, and then they gave them a tour at the senior centers and talked about the different programs and availability offerings for them.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay.
Thank you. That, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Resource Conservation Commission?
I will start with our ordinance here. I will make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-0-26, revising Chapter 41, solid waste and recycling, and Chapter 70, forfeiture schedule.
Second motion.
Resource Conservation Commission approved.
Board of Public Works approved.
Okay, what is this?
The state of Wisconsin has updated its ordinances, and so we are aligning ours with theirs. We got a sample, kind of a template ordinance from the DNR. There's a section that's been inserted, listing exemptions for the requirement to segregate recyclables from trash in the cases where a waste processor does that separation for you, or if your trash is burned as fuel, or if the DNR has granted a variance. There's information in there about multifamily housing, providing adequate recycling containers, and updates to the forfeiture, the basically fines for violating the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any question, comments? Yes.
Are there any changes to our separation requirements that we currently have?
I don't believe there are. Ben, you can just confirm that, right? Here he comes.
Yeah, there, there's really no changes to the kind of meat and potatoes. So yeah, no, no changes to the separation requirements.
What separation is?
Separating recyclables from trash.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. Okay. Okay, any other comments, question? Here none. All those in favor of ordinance 2025-0-26, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Ben.
Some additional updates from the RCC. We did some planning with a representative from the Wisconsin Eco Latinos. They want to hold their environmental conservation fair at the North Fishatory Road Hub next April. We welcomed our new member, Diana De Pierola. She works for Focus on Energy. She's got a background in law and environmental conservation. So I think she's a great fit. We just. Um, we discussed our draft twenty twenty-five annual report, our twenty twenty-six calendar of events. The food scrap program that was, you know, with the, um, the buckets that are, they, they give away and, and you can take the scraps over to, um, Swan Creek. We've got about a hundred and fifteen people signed up as of November sixth. And I guess maybe Mike, a little call back to your question there. We've got a new styrofoam dumpster coming to the recycling drop-off site this month and they're expanding, so it's not just blocks, uh, polystyrene they're going to accept now, but you can also put other types of plastic in there, particularly, um, plastic film like, uh, grocery bags, plastic grocery bags. Although we are still collecting, um, at the front of City Hall here for another next trucks bench. We, the city has applied for one of the charge-up Dane County Level Two EV chargers for McKee Farms Park.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and, uh, a meeting or two ago, we'd, uh, council okayed us to join the Wisconsin Climate Coalition and that was just in time for Phil to attend the annual convention. About a week or two after that. And, uh, so the priorities for the coming year apparently are electrifying the fleet and greening the grid.
And we are doing that.
I, I just gotta give Bill a shout out. We were, this Saturday, that we were at an event at Delta Beer, uh, Delta Beer Lab. And we were, I can remember what we were talking about, Julia.
It was about, it was about environmental.
Environmental, and they were like, yeah, I talked to the one guy, he's tall, he wears glasses and he always talks about energy. So definitely gotta give you a shout out, let you know, like, you're, you're doing, you're walking in your space and people are acknowledging it, so.
Yes.
In regards to the, um, organics collection, I know the, the city now has a, a webpage about the food scrap stop, but it would be great to update the organic waste and composting, like, section above it, because it doesn't say that we have a organics collection. And unless you're looking at the sidebar for it, you might not know if you just looked up organics on the city website, so I feel like that, that webpage should be updated and some of that's very out of date.
Mostly department level.
Yeah, it's, it's just a lot of work to update the website. And so the, the page on the food scrap stop is great, but I think if somebody just looked for, searched organic waste and went there, they would not know we had the program.
Okay. Uh, the other thing is, uh, are you planning to discuss other location for the scrap, you know, program? Collection program?
There was brief mention of expansion of that at some point in the future, but we need to kind of see how, how the pilot's working.
Okay, because I will not repeat again, that location is not a good location, so, but, you know.
Well, we did get an update from, we didn't get any numbers about how much stuff has been dropped off, but one of the commissioners dropped by there and looked inside each of the four bins and found that everything was in compliance. It wasn't like people were putting trash in there or, or stuff they weren't supposed to, so kudos to the, to the hundred and fifteen people who are taking advantage of it so far.
Okay, good.
As one of the hundred and fifteen people taking advantage, um, I can just also say, I, when I went, like, I think it was a week ago, I also looked in all four of the, um, of the big orange buckets and it was, like, each one was about a quarter full. So even within that first couple of weeks, we essentially collected the equivalent of one of the green or blue trash bins that most folks have in their garage, um, within just a couple of weeks, so.
Okay, good to know. Okay, um, do we need to vote? Have you already said that?
We already voted on the.
We voted? Ah, we are talking about, okay.
He was just providing.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
No, okay. Thank you, Bill. So then we move to Transportation and Transit Commission.
Our next meeting is Thursday.
Okay, Community and Economic Development Authority.
Um, no report on my end.
Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee.
We meet, uh, Tuesday, the eighteenth of November, one week.
Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission.
Uh, we meet on December third in the morning.
EMS, we don't have anything in EMS. Um, Health and Neighborhood Committee?
Uh, no report at this time.
Remember the ribbon cutting, November fourteenth, twenty-fourth. I'm losing it. I am hungry. Okay, um, Housing Advisory Committee?
Just a reminder that the Fitchburg Funders Forum for Housing is, uh, this Thursday, um, at the library.
Landmark Preservation Commission?
No report.
Tree Advisory Committee?
Will meet on December fourth.
Community and Equity Committee?
I am glad to announce that our first meeting will be happening on November twentieth, five P M. in, uh, Genie Ceiling Room. And that, and then our second December meeting will be December fifteenth from five to six fifteen. And then starting in January, we'll go to our normal cadence, which will be the first Wednesday of the month from five fifteen to six fifteen prior to the committee of the whole meetings.
Okay. One hour, wow. Okay, thank you. Um, we don't have any other reports from other commission and committees, so we move to the standing committees.
Finance, I will start with, uh, Director of the Report. We, in the packet, we had a list of write-offs. We developed a write-off policy last year for the first time, which is crazy, because we didn't, we didn't write off any uncollected accounts for the entirety of this history of the city of Fitchburg. So we did a lot last year, but, um, we're doing more and kind of cleaning, continuing to clean up the books. So it had a list of all the write-offs. There will be a big one, if anything, over twenty-five thousand has to come to council, so there will be something coming to council soon in that regard. Um, but it was just a list of what had happened at the staff level. Um, and then all of the twenty twenty-four annual reports for our active TIDS, our tax increment districts, um, are, were also in the packet. There are supplemental reports for the more active TIDS, so if there's a lot of action happening, there's additional information that Ellers does. We only do it for the active TIDS because it's expensive to pay Ellers to do those analysis. Um, the rest, the rest, and the ones that we submitted were, they're statutorily required, so we always, we do them manually. The Joint Review Board meeting, um, reviewed them in more depth, if you're interested in learning more, and, um, Alder Lattesay said it was a great meeting, so if you're interested in learning more about our TIDS, that's one place you can go. Um, and then Misty got some early property tax numbers. Um, not all of them are in, so we don't have MMSD or, um, Dane County yet, but for everyone else, if you look at the increase for the average home in Fitchburg. Oregon School District went up three point one percent, which is a hundred and forty-two dollars. Verona School District went up six point two percent, uh, for three hundred and thirty dollars. Madison College was up two point two percent, uh, for a difference of seven dollars. And then Fitchburg, assuming we pass this budget tonight, is up three point one percent, um, with a difference of eighty-three dollars. And the property tax bills are set to be mailed on December twelfth.
Madison is going to be a big number.
Yeah, so we'll have, we should have them, we, I might have them for your next meeting, or if not, it's certainly by, uh, December ninth, our December ninth meeting, we'll, we'll have the numbers for, for all the different municipalities. Okay, and I'll do the resolution. I'll move approval of resolution R one ninety-nine twenty-five, supporting the levy limit adjustment for the increase in the joint EMS district assessed charges.
Second.
Finance Committee approved. Um, this is, we've done this for the last four years. Um, this is a resolution that each of the municipalities, uh, City of Verona and Town of Verona pass to allow for a levy limit adjustment. That means that, um, the two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar increase in EMS expenses for the twenty twenty-six budget does not have to be absorbed into the overall tax levy, but can be added. Um, we've done it for the last four years. It's allowed us to keep up with the EMS budget and we are passing it. Uh, it has already passed, uh, City of Verona and Town of Verona.
Okay, any question, comments? Here none. All those in favor of resolution R dash one ninety-nine dash twenty-five say aye.
Aye.
And your polls, the motion carries. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, could we back up to eight Q? I do have an update from the MPO Policy Board.
Okay, oh, yeah, okay.
We met last Thursday, November sixth. It was interesting, we, we didn't have an October meeting because there wasn't enough on the agenda and yet, um, in the November agenda, we had seven resolutions. Resolution fifteen, adopting a public transit agency's safety plan performance measure target. Um, so this is things like, you know, how many, how many bus pedestrian collisions, assaults on drivers, collisions with other vehicles, et cetera. Um, so it established those target metrics. The goal, of course, is zero, but realistically, we expect some. Uh, resolution sixteen was a transit, transit asset management plan targets. Um, so this is basically just keeping track of all of the buses and paratransit vehicles and the garages and tracking their, it's kind of like the capital improvement plan, you know, just tracking how many vehicles are at what stage of their life. And of course, a complicating factor is going to be that, hey, we just got sixty-two new articulated buses all at once. So fourteen years from now, they will all reach the end of their life at the same time. So, um, having a target like we want only, you know, a maximum of twenty-five percent of our vehicles beyond their lifespan, that's going to be difficult to do. Interesting, uh, that Christoph Spielr, the Transportation Director for the City of Madison, mentioned that when these buses reach the end of their life, the batteries can be, you know, with, with, the question came up, how do you dispose of a bus? And especially the electric vehicles. Um, and the EV batteries are probably still going to be at like eighty percent capacity, which is too low to keep going in a normal EV. But you can put those out, um, kind of like we have for our Sunnyside Solar Field as storage for the grid. Resolution seventeen, approving the Section fifty-three-ten awards. This is paratransit, uh, eligibility and mobility coordinator and a call center and the Newbridge Madison Driver's Salary and Operations. Uh, resolution eighteen, approving transportation alternative awards, which includes two Fitchburg projects. One is the County Double M Underpass, which has four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars of federal funding. And one is the Traceway and Leopold Path, uh, which is going to have seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand in federal funding. Other projects, the, of interest is a B-cycle expansion into the city of Middleton, bike path along Odana Road by the, the golf course. Um, and a bike pa, bike path along North Main Street in Verona. Um, and they mentioned that they had twelve applications with eight point four million dollars in requests. And the, per the MPO policy, there was six point seven million of eligible expenses. Uh, but they had only two point seven million in funding available, so everybody had to take whatever scraps they, they were given. Uh, resolution nineteen, we approved four projects, including Irish Lane. Um, there was originally one additional project, County Road BW Broadway, um, from Fraser Avenue over to US fifty-one, but the county backed out. So now all the other projects, instead of being funded at fifty percent, will get funded at fif, uh, sixty-four percent. Um, resolution twenty, approving the transportation improvement plan for the MPO and Dane County, WISDOT projects for an eighteen-one fifty-one, um, construction project between Highway PD and Dodgeville. So this is like, I think thirty-five miles, they said. There's two sections, um, between Fitchburg and Verona. They want to do a capacity expansion. And then from Verona out to Dodgeville, they want to convert the, the road to a true highway, so removing all driveways and field crossings and just making, uh, increasing safety. Um, the speed limit on that road has crept up over the decades and it's got a lot of turns that are a little sharper than can be managed at the posted speed limit. So there's a, they're, they're experiencing an average of four crashes per week on that section of road, uh, most of which are single cars that leave the highway, so. Um, they're going to look at straightening things out a little bit. And the last resolution, uh, approving the twenty twenty-six Unified Planning Work Program. This is the big report that, um, goes to the federal government. It's, it's basically, um, you know, the key reporting step to keep our formula funding. And it, it kind of lists all of the things that the MPO does. So there's public outreach, long-range transportation planning, safety and accessibility, data collection, transportation improvement program, ride sharing and traffic demand management, as well as CARPSY.
Thank you for the update. Okay, so we are in personal committee?
Um, we have a meeting on, oh.
Go ahead.
You're the chair. Sorry.
Go ahead.
We have a meeting on Wednesday, tomorrow.
I was gonna say the same thing, we got.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and next we did ninety-one, and we did the other ones, so now we are moving to unfinished business.
I'll move approval of resolution R one seventy-six twenty-five, adopting special rules for the twenty twenty-six budget adoption.
Second.
Okay, so Misty, our finance director, she's going to tell us what is that special rules.
So we actually don't need the special rules this year, but we always put it in just in case we do. And I would suggest that we still approve them, just because it's kind of the practice, uh, so we can say that we did. In the ordinances, uh, there are very strict requirements on how budget adoption goes tonight. So each Alder is allowed to speak twice per amendment. That includes amendments to amendments, but does not include motions and does not include voting. So anytime you want to speak about something, that counts as one of your time. City Attorney Zissman is going to be checking you off as you go to make sure we're staying honest. And then each amendment can only be spoken about for five minutes in total. That's not each of you five minutes per amendment, that's total for the amendment for five minutes. If, as a council, you want to talk longer about an amendment, you could, uh, extend that to ten minutes, so another five-minute extension. And then each extension would have to be voted upon separately by the council, simple majority vote. So we'll go through the amendments one by one. You are allowed to make amendments to the amendments, so change something, kind of along the edges of what was actually submitted, but there's no new amendments that are allowed off the floor. So really just kind of what's been submitted more or less is what will be voted on tonight. All of this is outlined in the ordinances. Other years when we've had a concern about passing a budget that meets levy limits, we have this special process, which is the resolution that's in front of you now, which basically allows us to go back and revote on amendments if we want to and or need to, until we get a budget that meets levy limits. This year, because the mayor's proposed budget met levy limits, of course, and none of the amendments that were submitted currently impact property taxes, I don't expect that we'll need to use these special resolutions, but again, in case something changes through the amendment process, let's still adopt these special rules just in case. Basically keeps everything the same, except it does allow us to go back through and revote.
Okay, any question, comment for Misty? Here none. All those in favor of resolution R dash one seventy-six dash twenty-five say aye.
Aye.
And your polls, the motion carries.
I'll move approval of resolution R one seventy-seven twenty-five, adopting the twenty twenty-six annual city operating budget.
Second.
Okay, so we were talking about the amendments?
Yep, so you'll start with number one. Generally, what we do is the person that sponsored it will move to approve it. And then you would need a second, go through the discussion. Again, amendments to the amendments is fine. Um, but then at the end, we would need a vote on the actual amendment. And then we would go on to number two.
Okay, so who is gonna, you do that, the finance chair, or I do it? Okay, so. Okay, I don't remember, so, um, so I move approval of amendment number one.
Yeah, typically they, all they're sponsoring that amendment.
Oh, okay, Dave, so go first.
So I'll move approval of amendment number one to remove the communication funding. Uh, you heard me talk at the committee of the whole. I don't have anything else to say. Second.
Okay, any question, comments?
I said most of what I said at the committee of the whole, but if we need to reallocate any of this money during the year, we have a process for that, so I, I am voting no on this.
Any other question, comment? Okay, here none. We are gonna go to, um, we're gonna vote, I'm gonna call the vote, um, we are gonna do roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancers Junior?
Nay.
Alder Gerhardt?
Nay.
Alder Herps?
Aye.
Alder Jettser?
Nay.
Alder Lattesay?
Nay.
Alder Maldonado?
Nay.
Alder Regstead?
Nay.
Motion failed.
Okay, motion, amendment number one failed. Okay, motion, amendment number one, failed. Okay, so next we move to number two, and it's...
I'll move amendment number two, add A.D. to McGaw Park.
Second.
Yeah, I said mostly what I said on this one. I looked in, I just want to say that I looked into the Firehouse subs grant application. The next application portal opens on January 8th, so I would love to see us apply for that. It makes total sense. I'm sure the Pickleball Group would provide any assistance they can. I think it would be helpful to have city staff involved in that, just because they're experts at grant proposals. I'd still like to see this amendment pass as a backstop if we're not successful in that grant process, but I'll accept the decision of the council. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any comment, question? Yes.
I watched the meeting, and I support this amendment. I think if, as long as we make kind of a condition that we look for grants, similar to what alders had discussed, then I think we can safeguard ourselves and push, you know, to be able to find the funding outside of this. And thank you, Alder Gerhardt, for kind of alerting our attention to these resources.
Okay, any other comments, question?
I, in the interest of time, will just reiterate what my colleagues have said. And also, I appreciate the staff memo that included information about kind of the precedent we would set and the policy we'd need to set as far as which parks would we want to potentially do this in the future. I would like to see this go forward regardless of if we get grant funding or not. And we can use this to kind of help shape that, that information down the road, so...
Okay. Any other question? So I am confused here. So we are adopting this amendment as it was written originally, or we are going to add...
I'm going to use my second time to talk. Yes, we would be adopting, I think, how I understood at the committee of the whole is that staff was comfortable moving forward with processing a grant application first, and then we would move forward with the funding if that was unsuccessful.
Okay, okay, so now we are... Okay, so I move to vote, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Danczer Jr.?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Jetser?
Aye.
Alder Ladase?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Regston?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Amendment number three.
I'd like to introduce amendment three, adding a Fitchburg youth commission. And I want to start off...
Second.
Oh, sorry. I want to start off by saying that I appreciate Alder Danczer for, Danczer Jr. for co-sponsoring with me. I did watch the committee of the whole meeting, and I would like to submit an amendment. Let me explain what it would be first. So I do believe that we should fund the stipends specifically that all committee members get, but I would be in favor of making an amendment to be able to cover ride share and/or food through donations. So that is the amendment that I would like to make. Everything else, I would keep the same.
Second.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor, on this amendment.
Can you repeat that amendment, please?
The amendment would, this isn't my second time speaking, right? This amendment would include funding for stipends of $25 per meeting, per member. However, it would change the funding source of the food stipends and the ride share to I'm like sweating.
Can I ask clarification question? What happened if we don't get the donation?
I would, can I venture, I guess, that we would just not provide those items to the members of the...
No table talk.
So you're done with your two? You cannot, you're done with your two?
He will be. Please, one second.
Well, I will let the chair make the ultimate ruling, but it appears that Alder Maldonado spoke once, and then another Alder...
You can use me for one.
Generously ceded his turn to answer a question. That would be my interpretation, unless the chair disagrees.
Okay, so, okay, so what we are doing here, so I can, I don't have, I can speak more. Okay. I am a figure.
You're doing chair work here, so, yes.
Okay, so we are, the amendment is to include the...
Fund the stipend.
The fund the stipends.
And donations.
And the donation for the meals and the ride share is going to be, the funding for, is going to be donation.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Okay, yes.
Yeah. Can we get clarification? There's a table on page 337 of our packet that lists account numbers with dollar amounts. Misty, can you tell us what we're talking about here?
Yep, for this one in particular. So the, if I understand correctly, and feel free to nod or shake your head if I'm incorrect, staff can speak as many times. So there's the per diem line, it says mayor council per diems, that's 1680, that would continue to be funded through city funding. The training and travel amount, however, of the $500 would be funded through grants. So in, and the Fact TV time would be funded through city funding. So the expenditures would all stay the same, but the revenue changes. This amount coming out of Ted closure would go down to reflect just the city-funded stuff, and there'd be another line added for the donation piece. And so I'm assuming everyone feels comfortable with Misty taking care of the accounting in the spirit of what's discussed.
I co-sponsored, so I guess, yes, I'm speaking one time, so he doesn't have to talk again in case he needs to say something else.
Okay, any other comments?
We're just talking on the change to the amendment.
Yes. Do you have anything to say, Dave? No?
Not right now.
Okay. Okay, so, so I'm going to, all those in favor of the...
Amendment to the amendment.
The amendment to the amendment, say aye. No, 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 we have to do the roll call, sorry.
Can you have a second? Is that correct?
Who's second?
Gerhardt, yep.
So roll call.
So this is a roll call on the amendment.
To the amendment.
To the amendment.
To the amendment, to the amendment. Alder Danczer Jr.?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Jetser?
Aye.
Alder Ladase?
Aye.
Alder Regston?
Aye.
The amendment to the amendment carries.
Okay. We are now at almost five minutes, so if the discussion...
I'll move to extend five minutes.
Second.
All those in favor of extending the, what is, the discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, so where we are now, now we need to...
We can discuss the amended amendment.
Okay, discuss the amended amendment.
I think this is a great idea. Anyone that wants to watch a more robust discussion should watch the committee of the whole, but I think it's exciting. I don't think there's, there's some municipalities that do something like this, but not a ton. And Fitchburg is already doing that Youth Government Week, and it'd be great to see this kind of a next, more official iteration of it.
Okay, we have Dave, and then Logan.
I think it is a great idea. My sense is it should be funded fully by donations, and I'm not sure it's necessary to have Fact TV on it. I'd like, in the words of my former respected colleague, Jim Wheeler, I'd like us to stay in our lane. And so I'll be voting no unless you decide to change it to all donations.
Okay, I want to clarify, because my understanding, this one is going to be a pilot, so we don't need to have Fact TV.
I can talk about that one quick, so you don't use up your time. So as it's currently drafted, it is proposed to be a full ordinance commission, not a ad hoc. If it was ad hoc, then generally, Fact TV would not tape it, but as a full commission, generally, Fact TV would.
Okay, so I think my understanding this, it was that this one was a pilot, isn't it?
Oh, not as currently drafted.
No, not as currently drafted. I just want to make a quick caveat to say, because we're going to have minors, although it is on, like, although I am still proposing it in the same way as a committee. I would say that for confidentiality of youth members, that we do not record it on Fact TV.
Do an amendment to it, yeah.
Do, well, so would I still have to change it to an ad hoc? I mean, I, I'm just thinking of youth protection and confidentiality, that we would want to protect the identities of minors if they choose not to be recorded. So if, if there can be some legal guidance on this without, I, my spirit is not to change it to an ad hoc, but to, again, protect the identity of young people. I work in youth development, so there's a lot of like, kind of policies around.
So I'll toss out some language, and staff or others can, can also contribute. Based on what I've heard and the spirit of what you're looking to include, I think maybe the amendment could be something along the lines of directing staff to assess whether or not it's feasible to not utilize Fact TV for the aforementioned privacy issues related to juveniles. I think, at least for me right now, I don't feel comfortable saying definitively a yes or a no. And I think there'd be a question that could be asked of if there's, you know, hypothetically speaking, seven members on this commission and one member is not comfortable with being recorded, does that then mean the entire meeting can't be recorded? So I think there's some logistical things we'd want to take a look at. So I guess I would offer that suggested language for an amendment, if you'd like to go that route, and if anybody else wants to contribute to that.
So what is the move now?
Second.
Hold on, before we do that, I just wanted to say, like, before we make the motion, like, I would suggest, having gone through this process for a year with adults in the ad hoc space, given like what this commission is designed to do and work with for the youth, it's more of like, kind of exposure and getting them acclimated to some of the things that we do and having them learn about things. I don't think the ad hoc space is necessary for this committee. And I, I mean, I'm only a co-author, but I, I mean, I don't know if you, if you can speak again, but I think that's what the direction, when we talked about this, kind of how we were thinking about it and wanted to institute it. Because we did have conversations about what that looked like for the Community Equity and Action Coalition Committee.
But I think what Alder Maldonado is more concerned about is privacy of the minors.
Right, but I'm just saying, like, folks did bring up, like, if we had to have that ad hoc space too, and like, have that as a full year. And I don't, and I'm just saying, I don't think that part would fit, like, what we need to do for like, the youth commission. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so we can keep it like the way it is, and then you guys are going to revise the recording of the meeting.
So I think the, to paraphrase the amendment that's being offered right now, is that the amendment to the amendment would direct staff to assess the feasibility of whether or not the meetings could not be recorded due to juvenile privacy concerns.
I made a motion, but there is no second, I don't think.
I second.
Okay, so now we have another amendment on the table, to the amendment.
Yeah, one other thing, so all the committees and commissions, you go to the website, you can see all of the members. Do we need to worry about having juveniles' names and email and/or phone on the website as well?
So if I may interject, a couple of points. One, we're now at our 10-minute limit, so before we move any further...
I move to extend five minutes.
Second.
All those in favor of extending the discussion for five more minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I'm not prepared to give you a full legal analysis here, as we sit today, as this wasn't really something that was on my radar, that the proposed committee would kind of look at, having different rules. I will say, though, that unlike Youth Government Week, which involves bringing in kids and kind of giving them exposure to the inner workings of city government, this body is currently considering creating a public committee that is going to be, in fact, not staff, but have appointed officials who are minors. I don't know that there's anything, I'm not aware of anything preventing this body from doing that, but once you do create that body, it is going to be a governmental entity in effect. It is going to be subject to public records law and open meetings laws as well. So there's really no way around that. So to the effect of, do we have to record those meetings or not? That's kind of an internal city policy. Meetings don't have to be recorded. And of course, as you're probably aware, years ago, they didn't used to be recorded, right? We didn't have the equipment to record all the meetings and to post them on the internet. And, I mean, we've been having meetings since before there was the internet. So that is not probably an enormous obstacle, but to the extent that this, the consideration is to create, in fact, a governmental body of appointed officials, those officials, even though they're minors, will be subject to public meetings and public record and open meetings requirements. That doesn't mean we have to record those meetings, but they will need to be open to the public unless specific open meeting exemptions would apply. So I am prepared to kind of, on the fly, offer that legal perspective.
So this is why I will recommend to this committee to be an ad hoc committee. But this is, you can disregard my opinion.
So I'll just, I'll just offer, obviously, it becomes difficult to try to implement new ideas on the fly, so to speak, with all of the various considerations associated with them. Perhaps in addition to ultimately voting on the amendment to the amendment, and ultimately the amendment itself, I think staff has a, has a pretty good idea of what the intent is by this amendment. And ultimately, whatever the outcome is after this evening, hypothetically, assuming that this amendment passes, what I would anticipate is staff will come back to common council to have something approved in order to actually implement this particular amendment. And therefore, that would then give one, staff, time to further assess, analyze, and offer recommendations to the common council. And then ultimately, if any additional changes to the structure, whether it's a youth commission or an ad hoc committee, the common council would be able to decide at that point in time. And if I'm incorrect on any of that, feel free, city staff here, to correct me on that. But that would be some advice that I would offer at this point in time.
Okay, so, are you fine? Yeah? Okay, so do we have, but we have that amendment?
We have an amendment on the, amendment to the amendment on the table right now.
Okay, it's okay, okay. So the amendment is to, is the feasibility of whether or not to record the meetings?
Correct.
Okay.
Televised.
Televised. Okay, so, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Danczer Jr.?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Jetser?
Aye.
Alder Ladase?
Aye.
Alder Regston?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, so now...
Have you have the amended?
Please, don't amend that. Okay, so now we have the amendment to the amendment to the amendment on the table. And please...
Just the amended.
The amended amendment, okay. But we amended like three times, so... Okay, any other discussion? Okay.
One minute, I will give one, under one minute. I didn't get a chance to speak on this at committee of the whole. So I just want to say, I think this is a great idea. I think that the perspective that youth can provide for things like parks and the library and many other areas of city government will be original and fresh and not what we're used to, and I think it will help us be a better city. So that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Logan.
And I will add one sentence on to what my colleague just said. I appreciated the perspective shared at the committee of the whole, that incorporating youth into existing committees and/or commissions may be a barrier and/or challenging for those folks to feel empowered to fully participate.
Okay. Okay, so let's do a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Danczer Jr.?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Nay.
Alder Jetser?
Aye.
Alder Ladase?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Regston?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move that we take a five-minute recess. The Aurora are out.
For who?
Second.
I can't see it from here.
What is?
Northern lights.
Okay, so...
We have to vote, don't we?
All those in favor of, please set the meeting for five minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, so, so I need a motion to reconvene.
I move to reconvene, second.
All those in favor of reconvening the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? We are... Oh, thank you. Okay, so where are we at?
I would like to introduce amendment three with four, with Alder Gerhart.
Second.
Adding Alder blogs. So thank you, Alder Gerhart, for standing in my place. Thank you to the council for a robust discussion, and thank you to city staff. I deeply respect and value your work and your time. I wanted to just make a few clarifications. I wasn't able to be at the committee of the whole meeting, and I just want to clarify a couple of things. So first, my intention behind this blog was not to incur additional work on the time of our staff. I think that, you know, the opposite, it was intended to really improve communications without adding significant costs of labor or of finances. The way that I am viewing the role of Alder blogs or the function of Alder blogs would be similar to other forms of communication that are public record, email, Fact TV, our comments that are made during council meetings, all of these are public record and people see them. And my intention is that, you know, if an Alder were to create a post, that that post would not need to necessarily be reviewed, but that rather, we would treat it the same way we would treat other forms of communication that our council members put out, that if somebody said something that was in violation of ethics, for instance, an Alder trying to use a blog in order to promote their campaign for reelection, that, you know, the public could flag that, city staff could flag that, or other council members could flag that, and take the appropriate steps, i.e., make a complaint to the Wisconsin Ethics Commission. If there was something that was maybe on a lower level, and I don't have all of this figured out, but if somebody was, say, putting out information that was inflammatory or false, that, you know, we could use this kind of sphere of the public to be able to correct that information. I think the important piece is going to be working on the front end to create really proper, robust guidelines for what we can and can't do, and then put the trust in us as elected officials to be able to use that vehicle responsibly. In terms of the 50-piece rule, I would say, I would be perfectly comfortable with suspending the use of blogs for any elected official who is running in a contested election from the time that it's found out that the election is contested, all the way up until the election itself. And a similar precedence of that was, I used to do a show on Fact TV interviewing residents, and it was very clear advice from Scott that, you know, when I'm running for reelection, I can't make them. I'm perfectly comfortable with us doing that. I don't think staff should be in the weeds on this. I think we should have the trust to be able to put out the information that we see, just like in these meetings, you know, we have the trust to be able to say the proper and ethical things and do the proper and ethical things when we're not here. We get a lot of training on that in our Alders orientation, and it's expected, as, you know, people that take this oath of office, that we are operating, you know, in good faith and following the law. So I just want to clarify those things before moving this forward. I thank Alder Gerhart for the support and cosponsoring in this amendment, and I'd like to ask my fellow council members to support in voting yes on this.
Okay, who is next? Logan, and then Dave, and...
I don't know that I want to make this a formal amendment. I did discuss with Alder Gerhart whether one possible way around any concerns about 50-piece rule or anything related to elections would be to have the blogs set up by district rather than by Alder, so that there's always somebody who is not up for election, and since we're unique, Madison's given us a framework where we have two Alders per district. I wanted to just offer that into the room, but I don't know that I want to make that in a formal amendment.
We're at five minutes.
Move to extend by five minutes.
Second.
All those in favor of extending the discussion five more minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, who is next, Dave?
I don't think it's necessary. You can set up a blog, you can do your own blog, rather keep the city out of this. I view this as a means to kind of boost the people, us in office, and do it on your own time and not worry about the city ethics and all these complicated things in the world of social media. I'd rather keep the city out of this.
Okay, thank you. Who is next?
Yeah, I kind of like the idea of having all the blogs on the city's website, so if you're looking for anything for the city of Madison, local government, I'm sorry, city of Pittsburgh, local government, you just go to the city of Pittsburgh website and you can find the blogs there. I think it's convenient for the residents to see everything in one place.
Okay, who is next?
I understand that there's some complexity in terms of funding this, but I think they can be overcome, and I do think the residents deserve a way to hear from their Alders that does not involve them spending the time to directly email or spending the time to watch a meeting or try to figure out where in the meeting is your Alder report. It's an easy way for people to learn about the city, and Alders are here. One of the roles that we have is to interpret what's happening in city government for our constituents, and there is no means to do that broadly on city resources, and I think there should be.
Logan, this is your second.
This is my second time, yes. I just want to also acknowledge, to Alder Herps' point, having the infrastructure outside of the realm of City Hall is quite costly, to the tune of hundreds or thousands of dollars a year, which I'm just going to be blunt when I only get a $5,000 a year stipend for this role. Not that that's the primary reason I serve, but between that and all of the other things, the business appreciation lunch and things like that, I don't think I should end up spending more money than I'm bringing in for the privilege of doing the job that I very much appreciate and very much enjoy.
I really appreciated watching the discussion at committee hole on this, and I am very sensitive to the concerns of staff around this, especially around if a staff member's in charge of posting and they are sent something that they're not comfortable posting, and then being in charge of having to put that up. And that, I take that seriously. I hope that we can find some sort of method that will alleviate that concern. I appreciate the city moving forward with some sort of e-newsletter that kind of comes with that information. Actually, as much as we hear about communication, the meetings and the events and the, you know, the things that we kind of highlight, like on city, I feel like people actually do have a pretty good idea of those things that are going on. What I hear about is, they don't know what is going on with Bowman Plaza, because when we talk about Bowman Plaza, it gets talked about in Plan Commission, and that's all coded in Plan Commission language. And then it comes here for the TIF request, and that all gets coded in TIF request language. And people don't know that we're building a building there, and they ask what's going on with the old strip mall. And so it's these larger projects that, frankly, we would be excited to write a longer-form piece on and say, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, this is why it's important to the city, where if we ask staff to do that, that's then a ton more work for staff that goes way above and beyond pacing the current set of city meetings and the city events and things like that. And so I think that's where this could be really valuable in terms of getting information about our long-term plans, our major projects that are going on that haven't been finalized yet and are in the pipeline, but that we are discussing and approving at meetings but that people don't know about. So that's where I think this could be a big benefit.
Who else? Okay.
To Alder Lattasay, your statement about the developments, I would actually envision being probably a section within that e-newsletter that could be very helpful, to your point, that is something that we not only hear from elected officials, but also from community members, ourselves as staff. So I certainly would see that being something that we would want to include in the forthcoming e-newsletter. I would ask the common council to consider, well, again, I will recognize that this council takes its role very seriously. That does not mean that all future members will take their role in the same perspective and seriousness as you all do, and that very well may create some of the very concerns or considerations that have been raised by city staff. And ultimately, that will have a negative impact on staff and its capacity. And also in light of a failed referendum that was largely recognizing the lack of staff capacity, it does raise some further questions about that. Ultimately, as it currently sounds as though this amendment will pass, what I would ask this common council to do is to afford city staff the opportunity and the grace to implement that e-newsletter and see how that looks as it relates to information that this common council would like to utilize for their Alder blogs, and see if that is meeting your expectations and needs before we fully implement individual or district-based Alder blogs. I think I would really like to ensure that there's some consensus on the information contained therein and working to refine that e-newsletter in order to try to meet the needs that you guys are looking to meet with this amendment. So, thank you.
Can we get another extension?
Yes.
Move to extend by five minutes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of extending the discussion five more minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, who is...
Yeah, thank you, Chad, for your perspective. I would just say, kind of reiterating, that having an irresponsible council member who puts out irresponsible information would probably do damage beyond just the capability of Alder blogs. We've seen it on council. We've seen people say really inflammatory things, untrue things, problematic things. And ultimately, you know, that will play out regardless of what platform it plays out on. So I would also say with regard to, let's try this first and then that, I think it can be a both-and. I think the work of an e-newsletter can actually supplement, you know, the work that Alders are putting out, because if you're putting out helpful information, I will definitely copy and paste it and put it out in addition to the information that I'm putting out in my district. I think the blogs also serve a very specific purpose of, you know, us being able to promote district-specific things, you know, in my case, or Dave's case, or anybody's case, some of the events that happen, you know, in our neighborhood associations, in our, you know, local businesses that are near us that may not hit the radar of, you know, a city event, like a, you know, community night out. You know, if we want to talk about the Allied Dunsmarch Neighborhood Association, pumpkin carving, we can put that in our blog. If we want to talk about something happening in Southdale, you know, Alder Dancer, you know, and Alder Reichstad can put that in their blogs, so.
Okay, anyone else? The other thing that I, you know, I want to make a comment about, the cost of maintaining our own blogs, you know, is pretty expensive, you know, I don't know, but it costs me more than $1,000, my constant contact. But I am thinking also in the future for people that they don't have the means to pay for a platform or for, you know, a subscription. That one, the blog could be a, you know, for those people that they cannot afford monthly subscription to a platform, it can be an option. I also, well, we can, you know, I agree that the capacity, city capacity is, you know, is another issue, is another thing that we need to put on the list. We are just creating the Communication Department, the email was sent, I don't know, you receive the emails. So we are reorganizing the Communication, the Fact TV Department and to create a Communication Department. So this is going on, this too. And the other thing is, like, how to prevent people write stuff during campaign time? We can make those accounts dormant, would be an option, you know, those blogs for the people running, they can be dormant from December 1st to election night. That one could be another option for, to avoid those people making any unethical, you know, actions during the period that they're running. So I don't know, I want to be Switzerland here in this one? But I want to put the pros and the cons, okay, about this. So that's it, yeah.
In terms of the work it takes to get this done, I don't expect to have a blog up and running in January. Like, I just don't think that's feasible. I just would like to see some forward momentum to include this as all of the, with all the things that we're doing to improve communication across the city, and the e-newsletter, I think in a lot of ways, does seem like a priority to me. But I think passing this doesn't mean this has to happen tomorrow. It just, I just would like it to be part of the conversation and moving, making moves towards it as we improve our communication across the city.
Okay, so, last call. Okay, let's, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jetzer.
Aye.
Alder Lattasay.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Regston.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Should I move the omnibus?
Yes, please.
On the approval of omnibus amendment A, adjust transfer out of fund balance ERIP strategy.
Second.
Okay.
Yep, so this is a amendment that imposes a strategy for us to retain our capacity under the Expenditure Restraint Incentive Program. Kind of think of this like moving money from checking to savings. It does not change how much money the city is able to spend overall. That budget amount of saving is the same, it just transfers between those two funds. I do ask for the flexibility to make sure that the number is exactly what I need it to be. I'm assuming all of my numbers are right, that transfer will be $5,389,198. Again, if my numbers are all right, so again, asking for that flexibility. Just because that's the number that we put in there doesn't mean that that's the transfer I will actually do when the time comes. I will budget for that amount. I will only do the transfer that stays within our fund balance policy that was previously adopted by the council.
Okay, any question, comments? Do you understand what we're doing? Okay. Okay. All those in favor of the omnibus amendment? Oh, we're roll call, sorry.
It's time.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jetzer.
Aye.
Alder Lattasay.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Regston.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, so now we are, possible reconsideration of council-proposed amendment. What is this? We don't need to do that?
We do not need to do that. None of the...
We do not need to do that. None of the amendments impacted levy limits. So since the mayor's budget as proposed met levy limits, the current budget as amended also does too. And for your information, when we get to the point of the resolution, there's a blank line in there right now for the property tax levy. That amount will be $32,726,746. That is a assessed value tax rate of $5.42. On the average home, it's an increase of $83.3.1%. And that left $43 in levy limit capacity.
Okay, so, thank you, Misty. So now we have to vote.
Closing statements.
Closing statements. Okay. So now we are going through closing statements regarding the 2026 budget. So we are going to start with Dave.
Are we going in?
District 1.
I would just add, I think you need to be cognizant of the fact, you know, the 3.1%, you know, we realize that's modest. For homeowners, it's twice that. Most homeowners, they have two working spouses, they have two cars, and most, I believe the increase is twice what we're looking at percentage when you include the wheel tax. And people are not happy about that. If you're not getting your earful like I am all the time, or maybe not out in your district, so that's all I'd say. We're saying 3%, but it's actually, you know, 6% when you include the wheel tax for an average-sized home. That's all I had to say. I wanted to thank the mayor, though, for getting the, working hard and essentially submitting a budget at the limit. Maybe I would prefer she brought it in under, but then usually other Alders are adding money to it. So I think you worked hard to bring it in at that level, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I want to also thank the mayor. I want to thank our finance director and all of our city staff for the work that they do in creating budgets, presenting budgets, and, you know, working collaboratively to be able to get this done. We're, you know, as council kind of in on the last end of this really long process, so I recognize the labor that it takes to not only show what you do to the public, but be able to actually execute on that work throughout the year. I have experienced nothing but professionalism from this staff in this city in the five years that I've been on council. I, you know, believe that we've done a really great job, especially more recently, in communicating, over-communicating. I know, you know, on issues of personal finance, it can be very tough and very fraught, especially when you hear stuff on social media, when you see stuff in meetings. But I think, I just want to give a kudos to my colleagues for taking the time to meet with individuals, putting this information in all types of forms, making it digestible for the public, because it's very complex material. And being able to have that consistency allows for the public to have faith in us. And I think at a time like this, when there's a lot of mistrust in government, being a part of this body really consistently fills me with pride, because I know that I'm working beside people that are ethical, that are community-oriented, and have the best interests of the public in mind. Whether we agree or disagree on policies, I really believe that this is the best council that I've ever been on. And I believe that everybody on this body acts in good faith and does the right thing.
Thank you. Bill?
Hard to follow that, but I did want to acknowledge that, you know, this is, levy limits are a tough thing. Paying taxes is a tough thing. And I put together an analysis similar to one that I'd done before, and I just want to kind of reiterate that this is a fiscally responsible budget. I guess, first of all, another public service announcement, you know, if you live in the median home, a year ago, you wrote a check for about $7,800, and about $2,600 went to the city of Fitchburg for our budget. So roughly, you know, over the years, roughly one-third of what you pay for your property taxes actually is going into and making up this budget that we've been talking about tonight. And Scott has graciously volunteered to put my slides up for me. So what you're looking at here is the property tax on a single-family home throughout the year. So if you look at that light-colored line, that's in nominal dollars. So back in 2003, you know, if you lived in the median single-family home, you paid about $1,400. But if you adjust that for inflation to today's dollars, that was about $2,500. And so if you look at the, kind of the bold blue line up there, that is inflation-adjusted property taxes on a single-family home from 2003 up to the 2026 proposed budget. And you'll notice that there was a big jump when we took on the library, and another big jump when we took on the two new fire stations, and then it took a nosedive in recent years. And so if you look, 2026, and then going back, those four last dots there, it's pretty flat. And we've had significant inflation over that time, which is why the taxes have kind of continued to go up. But when you adjust for inflation, it's remained flat. And then there's, if you look carefully on the upper right, there's that one blue dot that represents, Alder Herps, that represents two cars. So another, an extra $80 for the household. So you can see that we're still, adjusted for inflation, we're still pretty low. This is basically the lowest taxes in real dollars on a single-family home since we took on the library. Go ahead and advance to the next one, Scott. So here's kind of another way of looking at that. So this time, we're looking at the operating budget. Well, I guess, you know, there's capital in there as well. But this is the budget divided by the number of residents in the city. So again, the light line is in nominal dollars. So back in 2006, we were spending about $600 per resident. But if you adjust that for inflation, it was about $1,000 in today's dollars. So again, you see kind of the same pattern. There was a big jump for the library, a big jump for the fire stations, and then it kind of took a nosedive. So again, we're sitting at kind of the low point since we took on the library. And then there is that one dot on the upper right that represents...
One second.
Sure.
Because we need, you are leaving right now?
I'm going to take it on Zoom.
Oh, you're going to take it soon? Okay, 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 good. Okay, okay. Sorry, Bill.
That's fine. So that one dot up there represents an additional $1 million added to the budget before we divide by the total number of residents. So again, you can see that this is, you know, since we, this is this kind of lowest, the lowest budget per capita that we've had since we've taken on the library. Go ahead and zip over to the last one, Scott. Thank you. And then, you know, I think we've, again, we've gone through this before, that an increase in your assessment doesn't correlate directly to an increase in your property taxes. So what you're looking at here, if you look at the scale on the left-hand side, that's the value of the median single-family home in thousands of dollars across time. So there's that major revaluation back in 2005 to 2006. And then in recent years, we've had enormous jumps. So, you know, since 2022, everybody's up 50%. The blue line goes with the scale on the right-hand side. That shows the actual property taxes associated with the single-family home. And that's just kind of been a straight line, even though the assessed value has done kind of crazy things over that time. So in particular, you know, the last couple of years, the single-family home has gone up about 6%, and the assessed value has gone up like 30%. So that's all I wanted to say. Fiscally responsible budget, I'm proud to give my blessing to it.
Thank you.
I'll echo the thank you to the mayor and all the city staff that have been deeply involved, especially the finance department, but all the department heads put a ton of work into this. And I know, I hear people asking, like, what are you doing to try to save costs? And the work is done. Every year, these departments go and dig into their budgets and look at what can be saved. And they put a lot of work in, and that happens all before you get the document. And every year, they go back and they try to trim it down even more. The city staff have been working for years to get good value out of these budgets. And that's why, when you look at how much property taxes are paid, if you just look at city of Fitchburg, it has been relatively stable compared to other increases. And so when you're seeing that spike in the property tax bill, a piece of it is Fitchburg, but the real spike is not being driven by the city of Fitchburg, because that city staff has been so responsible in making sure that we're cutting out anything that's unnecessary. We run a really lean city. Our city staff do an extraordinary amount of work. And many of our staff, especially our public safety staff, do more than their fair share, because we just don't have enough staff to cover everything that would be ideal. But they make it work. And we've done a lot of work this last year to reorganize the police department, the leisure services, which would be the senior center, and the recreation, and the parks department, and then future the communications department, to make sure that the same number of staff can do more work. So there's always being work done. The thing I hear most about when I tell people that I live in Fitchburg or that I represent residents in city of Fitchburg, people love living here. This is an amazing city to live in. It's beautiful. The services are great. It's in a great spot within Dane County. It's just, it's perfect in so many different ways. And a lot of that beauty and greatness comes from the work of the local government. And I think a lot of people value it. And I remember at our District 2 listening sessions, one of the people at the end raised their hand and said, "I love paying my property taxes," because it's a really good value for what you get. Someone, an average home, is paying, what, $2,700, $2,800 a year?
Yeah, $2,700.
To get police, and fire, and water, and streets, and snow plowing, and parks, and all of the things that make up the city. It is the things that you live every single day in is what you're paying for. And I think almost everybody I've ever met that lives in Fitchburg agrees that this is a wonderful place to live. So this is a good budget. And not only are we, you know, we're maintaining services, but with the influx of that vehicle registration fee money, we're actually able to add bus service. And this is a big deal that we probably haven't talked enough about. It probably won't kick in until August of next year at the earliest. But when we increase the service on the 65 and the 75, you open up so much more of the city of Fitchburg to paratransit service, and you connect routes going from the east side of the west side of the city, and that also can take you to the north. So this is a huge expansion in access to public transit. And for people that use paratransit service, they can access so much more of the city of Fitchburg, including, for the first time, being able to access the senior center, the library, and city hall. And especially the senior center, the transportation of the senior center is so tough, and now paratransit service will be available. That is a huge deal. And so I understand that, I sympathize with, the costs are rising across the board. And when people get their tax bill, it's not just Fitchburg. Fitchburg's increase is relatively reasonable, and it's below the inflation rate, but it is on top of the other municipalities. And so I understand that. But I just want people to know that that vehicle registration fee is paying for some pretty incredible things, public safety and expansion in transit primarily, that will support the most vulnerable residents in our city in a big way. So I just want people to be aware of how amazing that is. And thank you all for contributing through your property taxes, whether that's through your rent or directly as a homeowner. We have a beautiful city. We're all part of this, like, wonderful, beautiful city. And I know it's tough, but I hope you're proud of what we do. And I know, just know that the city staff and the mayor put in so much work to make this budget possible. And I hope that the things that you love about the city, you know that that's as a result of that budget. Thank you.
All right. Please bear with me. My laptop died about 10 seconds ago. So I'll start by echoing a lot of what my colleagues have already said. I think this is a good budget. I will partially say that's why I didn't introduce any amendments, because I didn't feel the need, and I didn't want to just throw anything out there just because. I also want to acknowledge that this budget has been unique and, in some cases, painful. As far, please correct me if I'm wrong, this has been the first year that we've ever laid off staff in the city's 42, 41-year history. So when we talk about the consequences of the referendum, of all of the things, the macro and the micro factors, these are those real impacts. We do run a lean budget, and I read every page of it. And when I hear folks say that there's waste, there's this, there's that, or we need to cut, I have asked more times than I can count, from before I was sworn in to, you know, basically every time someone brings it up, I say, "Give me one specific thing you would cut, a service that you find that you do not value from the city of Fitchburg that would be worth paying, worth not paying for." I've never gotten a good answer, other than there's one guy who I think wanted to privatize the library and the fire department and everything else with it, in which case, and it was not Ron Swanson, but pretty close. And I'm not willing to privatize our fire department or anything like that. So as an elected official, it's my job to make some of those tough calls. And especially in the future, there may have to be some more of those. But we, you know, I don't think any of us can do it if we don't have that guidance from the community. When I was at a 130-person neighborhood meeting a couple weeks ago, I was asked for more and more. And, you know, we want crossing guards, we want more police officers, we want more firefighters, we want traffic improvements, we want this. And, you know, so what I'm hearing from folks is they want more, but also wanting to pay less. And those two things just don't square. We have made some significant improvements, as we've discussed, between the police department reorganization and the leisure services reorganization and the forthcoming communications reorganization. But at some point, you can't squeeze more blood from a stone. I think it's unreasonable to continue to ask for more and more and more while demanding to pay less and less. I'm willing to have, whichever way the conversation goes, I'm willing to have it. But I think there needs to be some of that, you know, that kind of squaring that circle, that we can't cut our budget, for example, by the amount that the Madison School District is raising theirs through the two referenda that passed there. So even when, you know, our percentage increase is 3%, when somebody gets their tax bill and it goes up $1,000 because they voted yes on the two school referenda, which passed overwhelmingly, and then voted no on the Fitchburg referendum, that's, you know, I just want folks to keep that in mind as well, that we're being asked to do more and not being given more resources, while the school district, and I live in Madison School District, so that's why it's fresh in my mind, is being asked to do more and getting $600 million more for both capital and operational expenses. This year, without the vehicle registration fee, which, as I should probably, you know, fully acknowledge, I was not a fan of and came out against while I was campaigning, getting back to the subject of what would we cut, at our District 3 listening session, it was, what, my sixth day as an alder? And the vehicle registration fee had passed...
One week before.
Yep, one week before. Thanks, Madam Mayor. I will throw you under the bus for that one. But when I asked folks, I said, you know, again, what would you cut? And then I put it in perspective. We have $500,000 in increased costs for our police services facility, which came in $10 million under budget. I just am never going to stop saying that. Our EMS agreement with Fitch Rona went up a quarter million dollars. We now have another, something like quarter million dollars in just keeping employee benefits at the same rate. There's a million dollars right there. What can we cut for a million dollars? And I brought forth and said, that would be the equivalent of almost the entire senior center's budget, or 40% of the entire library budget, which we can't cut by that much, because then we'd have to pay the county library tax, and we'd end up paying more and getting less, and that's a whole other funding conversation. So I just want to keep this conversation going and say that we have to consider these things, but at some point, we have to ask our community for, to temper their expectations with the resources that we're being given. And when I said... And when I said a million dollars is a department or major cuts to departments, people's jaws dropped. And I think that's, from a communication standpoint, I hope that we continue to tell that story and that message of these are the services and this is how much it costs to run a city. What are you willing to live without?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we're running into a time limit.
Oh, I didn't know there was time limits, my apologies. I will stop talking there, thank you.
I apologize.
Oh, they have 10 minutes?
Closing minute, uh, closing statements are five minutes.
Oh, yeah. I don't need five minutes. My, my co-alder is very thorough, like I appreciate it. Even when we attend meetings together, you know, he sends out these great notes and everything. So like, yeah, I will, I'll be brief. Basically, I just wanted to echo the sentiment of my colleagues. Thank you, our finance director, city staff, attorney, the mayor, our friends at Fact TV as well for being here with us. And I just appreciate through Madam Mayor, the transparency of throughout this budget process, allowing us to comment on things, make amendments, but also being transparent in like what you wanted to put forth and reaching out and conversing with us about those things that we would like to do. And even colleagues, there were times where people brought things forth and they weren't all unanimous or some people voted against different things. And I think the one thing I really appreciate about working with you all is that I think we disagree with ideas and not people. And I really appreciate kind of that perspective. And I think we work very collegial and well together in that, in that prospect. And even some of the things that were brought forth that could potentially impact the city staff's time, I appreciate folks sharing like what that looks like and making it in real time for us. And I think folks were very cognizant of those things and didn't want to add that burden to, to folks who are already busy. So I won't belabor any more points. I just wanted to issue some thank yous and appreciate it going throughout this process. But I will end there and then pass to Micah. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to, the first thing I want to do is just acknowledge that I'm going to say a lot of the same things that other people said, which is that this is fiscally responsible and et cetera, et cetera. And I'm going to make a couple of points. But I want to start by just acknowledging that we are passing this budget regardless of whether it's fiscally responsible or not, at a time that's really difficult for a lot of people in our city. We have federal employees in our city, we have SNAP recipients in our city, we have people who get insurance through the ACA in our city. And when we pass this budget and we send out tax bills, they receive those. And whether it's fiscally responsible or not, the stress they get from receiving that tax bill is real. And I just want to acknowledge that before I go into this. So city taxes on the average, single family home increased $83 this year, so 3%. We went over that. Since 2020, which is as far back as I can remember life, the increase was $262, which is 10 and a half percent. And if you include the wheel tax in that, it's 13.8%. So inflation during that same time period was 26%. So about double what our budget went up over that time or what taxes went up on the single family home. People ask us a lot, they say, we are seeing all of this inflation, we are tightening our belts, why aren't you? That gap, that 13% is the city tightening their belt because of inflation. We see the same inflation, our health insurance costs went up 9% this year. And so we see the same inflation on things, it's different things. We're buying asphalt and health insurance and other people are buying groceries and clothing, but we see the same inflation in those materials and we are dealing with that. I want to thank the mayor for prioritizing staff in the levy limit that we have. That health insurance cost of 9% increase was absorbed by the city. And so that staff is not seeing that increase. And we are providing a cost of living adjustment that I wish was higher, but is there. And I really want to call out that we increased paid family leave for staff this year and I hope we can do it more in the future. When we started this process, that was kind of the baseline. That's what we added. That basically used up the whole levy, the whole levy limit. And we were told, if you want something, find something to cut. I was told that explicitly. And I just, I think that prioritizing staff in this case, when it comes to the budget, I just, I'm, I'm very proud that we did that and I'm glad that we did that. And when it comes to the budget, this is the first year of me looking behind the curtain of this process. The staff, the people up here, I think they do this process with care and seriousness. And I just, I really appreciate every, all of the work that's gone into it. I'll just also say, I've never seen a council that has more people sitting up here saying that they're not only willing to sit down and meet with someone and talk about the budget, but that they would be, it would be like a genuinely enjoyable experience to sit down and talk with people about the budget. There are many, many people, including myself, that offer is always open to anyone. If you don't know it, it is, just reach out to any one of us. And so going back to the beginning, I'll just close by addressing anyone in the community who is fortunate enough to get their tax bill and just write a check to cover it. Every food bank in the area is, can use help right now, whether it's through money or volunteers. There are holiday gift giving services out there. There's a million of them, pick your favorite and use it. Check on your neighbors if you know they receive federal benefits or work for the government. So the holidays are coming, let's just try to spend the rest of the year taking care of each other. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I can make some comment too, before we vote? Okay. So, so I want to thank, you know, when we started this process, what it was, at the end of August, maybe after CIP. So there are a lot of meetings and there are a lot of drafts. In, in that process, when those drafts come, you know, is the time we already start thinking of revising, going back to the head of department, asking them what else you can cut. So there is a lot of things that the general public, they don't have any idea what is coming up to, to build this, this budget. And this budget was, this is my third budget that I am preparing as a mayor, but I also had the opportunity to, you know, always participate in other ma, in other budgets with amendments. But this one was for me, the, one of the most challenging because, you know, we are having a lot of uncertainty at the federal level that are affecting our municipality, our state, inflation cost, construction cost, all, and we are no immune as an organization to all of this pressure. So, and for me, it was very important to, to determine first, what are the priority for my budget for '26? And as some of you mentioned, it was, we are already under staff, okay, in all the departments, okay? And for me, one of the priority for, was retention, retention of our current employees, maintain intact all the benefit, and of course provide some adjustment to the salary with COLA. Priority was public safety, you know, the police facility, how we're going to cover that building. And yes, we had to make a difficult decision this year about the vehicle registration fee, that some, you know, people, residents are saying, that one was your easy way, Julia. No, it wasn't my easy way. It was a more difficult decision that I had to make because I was looking at the long term sustainability of the city financially. And it was, and that increase in the vehicle registrat, you know, the vehicle registration fee allows to, you know, to, to provide the funding for the police facility, operation cost that is going to cost half a million dollar. You can imagine if we didn't have the money, if we were looking out from where the money will come from. So, and probably, but this was a, this budget brings an investment in public safety, also increasing the wages. I am very proud of increasing the wages to our pay on call firefighters, that because they deserve a, you know, a better way, base wage increase. And also, you mentioned Gabriela, public transportation was another priority. So, so I want to thank Misty, Chad, Adam, for all the meetings, for all the drafts. And also, we meet levy, you know, and we are under levy, so that one should be proud of that too. The other thing that I want to mention to our resident, if you're watching, is the budget is a 500 document, piece of document that is more about numbers. It's also, you can find at the beginning of each department, like a summary of the 2025 accomplishment and also the 2026 goals. So this is a very good document for people to take a look. It took, it's a 500, more than 100, 514 pages. So it's a very well drafted document where we are sharing also what we did with the money last year and what we're planning to do next year with your money. And the other thing, we were lucky that our police facility came under budget because we are going to save a lot of interest and principal in the next couple of budget to our resident. And we have a AAA bond too. So, and I think that we, what I call this, we delivered a balanced budget. I, I know that David, you say 3.1% inflation is $83 average, you know, but believe me, I tried to make it lower than 3.1, we couldn't make it. You know what I mean? And I think it's a budget that is aligned with inflation, I will repeat the same, we are no immune to inflation as an organization. And 80% of our budget is to pay personal cost. So if we need to make cut in our budget, the first thing that we need to go is to make cut, you know, in the personal budget. And it was a decision that I, I wasn't planning to do and I am not planning to do if I continue to be your mayor. So, so it was, it wasn't an easy decision to bring this budget forward, but I think I appreciate the support. We are a growing community and as a growing community, we have a lot of challenges. And this is something that we need to address in the future is, how do we want our growth to look like in the future?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, Madam Mayor, but we're once again up against the time limit.
But I am the mayor, I don't follow the rules. This is what they told me. I am outside the rules, isn't it?
So this is pursuant to ordinance 10-45.
Okay, so that's it. I want to say, okay, no, my, okay, I'm done, okay. I say what I have to say, my piece, and that's it, okay. Thank you. Valerie.
Sorry, Madam Mayor.
Oh, yes, I don't know, who is it? Yeah, the roll call? Okay.
What do we vote on?
We vote for the budget.
To adopt the amended budget.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jettzer.
Aye.
Alder Lattesay.
Aye.
Alder Malvenaro.
Aye.
Alder Regston.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so now we move to Alder report. You need to be quick, fast.
The only thing I wanted to report, we.
Thank you, Misty.
Thank you, Misty. The, we had a vaccination clinic at the LA Drive building, you know, was held by Public, Public Health Mass in Dane County. It was free vaccines for both children and, and adults. And it's a great, you know, a wonderful, wonderful service and something that's very needed. And it was held on November 5th. So I'll try, next year, I expect I'll have the same thing. There were free, there were flu shots too. So I'll, I'll try to get a better notice out next year when it's coming up. And shortly, the TOTS Toys for Kids campaign will have its giveaway at the Boys and Girls Club. People had to register previously, but that, that's coming up. It's always kind of a joyful, joyful event. That's all I had.
Thank you. Joe?
There's a Allied Dunsmarsh Neighborhood Association meeting in collaboration with the Allied Co-op. It's going to be next Thursday evening.
Okay, thank you. District 2?
Yeah, I attended the Life Point groundbreaking and the business luncheon. It was an excellent day. Careful out there on the roads, apparently winter is here. This morning, my son reported on his way to work that he saw an accident involving three cars. If you're looking for a, a holiday gift, you can give a B-cycle annual pass for $75 through the end of the year. That's a $216 value.
Wow.
And I also wanted to give a shout out to Bikes for Kids Wisconsin. They are piloting a, a new program where they deliver meals on two wheels. So they're delivering food for, for their homebound customers who, who rely on food pantries.
Okay, thank you.
Attended the Madison College reception for Fitchburg Alders a couple of weeks ago, so thanks for organizing that, Donald. The, it was a, there were some nice people there, I had a good, good conversations. It occurred to me that it might be nice to do a meet and greet in the City of Fitchburg boundaries at some point because people were, came because they just wanted to meet us. And there's obviously other chances to do that, but a meet and greet is a different venue for it. I also went to the Sustained Dane Summit last Friday with Phil Groupie, our sustainability specialist, Lauren Gager, housing specialist, and Joe. It was a nice conversation, including a panel on housing sustainability, which was a first for them. I'll be at the Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority Conference tomorrow and Thursday, talking about housing regionally and statewide. I found out through an email that Kids Building Wisconsin is moving to Alliant Energy next year. So much to the probably sadness of us, but probably the relief of the, of the public works and parks and public, and public safety departments. But anyway, so we'll, we sad to see that go because I know that was a really special event in McKee Farms Park, but I think they just started to outgrow, outgrow the park. So I thought everyone should know. And then I had a question from a resident about leaf, this is the last week for leaf pickup. But there are tons of leaves on the trees still. And so as you continue to get leaves after that, your options are to mulch it with, with your, in your lawn or take it to the recycling drop off center around Fishette Tree Road. There is a yard waste drop off there. Those are your two options going forward because we don't have plans to add another pickup. Thank you.
Thank you. District 3?
I also had the pleasure of attending the UW Health Meritor Life Point Groundbreaking. Very excited to see that project move forward in Uptown. As I've said before in this room, I think it'll truly be catalytic for the growth in Uptown and the eastern side of the city and anything we can do to increase our employment base and some additional folks who may be able to patronize a grocery store, as has been repeatedly questioned where that is. I think that will be, and anything we can do will be an asset in that way. Also attended the business appreciation luncheon and I will voice my appreciation for all the city staff involved. Also attended Madison College meet and greet. And then one other quick item, as of a couple of days ago, there are some new traffic pattern changes to Lacy Road between Highway MM and it's Braska and Endive. So that's the first block as you're heading into Terrevesa. It is now no parking on either side of that block. It was the one block where there was no bike lanes, so bikes had to kind of venture in to the traffic lane. It was also a congestion point because of, it's the primary way into the neighborhood. So don't park in the bike lanes. I saw several people doing it today. Obviously, it's a new traffic pattern, so get ready for that. And my much requested yellow paint has been put on the curbs along Lacy Road in Terrevesa as well, so folks know how far they should park away from crosswalks, so you're not parking right up on the corner and making it hard to see pedestrians trying to cross the street. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Nothing major, other than my colleague has already shared, but thanks to folks for the orders, whoever come out to the Madison College event, and thanks for Madison College for hosting us there. And hopefully we can get something done in our, in the City of Fitchburg limits and have folks come out where they get to engage with us in person as well. So, thank you.
The mayor and Administrator Breckland and I met with some representatives from Seminole Pool. They are, they have been in a multi-year process of trying to raise funds to update the pool. They have recently changed kind of what they are planning to do. They've kind of scaled it down a little bit in terms of fundraising struggles. And so we discuss. And so we discuss options for them in terms of just support from the city, even if we can't, you know, support them financially, how we could support them in other ways in terms of their efforts. And so if anyone's just interested in finding more about that, they've been in the community for a long time, so, and they're just, they're still in the process of fundraising. I went out and met the people who run Four Winds Farm, and I feel like we don't, I don't really highlight them enough. They do a ton of stuff out there. There's space to rent for events, there's space for meetings, they have a full kitchen, they run cooking classes and have pizza nights on the farm, and they do a food truck festival every year. And I'll do a better job of highlighting them in the future. But they are starting a concert series in their main event space in the top of the barn, concerts like violin, cello artists type things. We talk about it some, but we don't talk about the arts as much as we probably could, and how that can kind of build community in the city as well. So they are really looking to put forth an effort to do that, and if anybody's interested in that, they should check it out. And lastly, I would just encourage residents to get involved in watching or coming to the interviews next Monday for the alder position. Whoever is selected will be the alder that sits next to me, and that's just as important as when we have an election. So get involved and watch them, and give us any feedback that you might have on what you think. And yeah, that's all I have. Happy Veterans Day to everyone.
Thank you. And I have a final announcement that I need to make, that I forgot to do during my mayor's report, is that, you know, every year I had to announce a mayor's award recipient, okay? So this year, there are different categories. So for the, for the community member, I chose Janice Hughes. She's a, she's in the Aging Well Committee. For business, Quibi Grove, that is celebrating 45 years this year, and Kelly Moss, the Racing Company. Same, because this is how I recognize. And then for the non-for-profit, I chose Rooted. They are doing a lot of work in the Southdale neighborhood. For the staff member, usually the staff, they rank themselves and they nominate themselves. So I, usually the staff that received the most nomination is the one that I select. And this year is going to be Deputy Fire Chief Chad Grossen. He's also celebrating more than 30 years with the city. So, so then, the award ceremony will be November 25, isn't it? At 6 o'clock, before our council meeting. So I will recommend that you attend. And then I want to thank Lisa for helping me to organize this award. She's kind of behind the scene, putting together all of this. So, that's it. So our next committee of the hall is.
Monday, November 17th, different date at 6:30 PM, different date than typical, but we are interviewing two candidates for the District Four alder seat vacancy, and that will be the only agenda item.
And then our next common council meeting will be November 25. Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. Buenas noches.